Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna get the meeting going here. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting, February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, at ten thirty. The ten thirty is the time that the Planning Department's items begin to go across the calendar of the Commissioners, just so you know, so you should be there by ten thirty if you plan to attend the Commissioners' meeting. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the back of the Commission chambers. Roll call. The only one I know is gonna be missing is Jim, and Jim had some surgery, was gonna be with us on Zoom today, didn't feel comfortable doing that, so Jim will be gone today. Approval of the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three minutes. Anyone have any additions, corrections, or clerical errors? I had one, there was some discussion whether it was three minutes to speak that we decided on, or five. Does everybody wanna weigh in on that, or shall we solve it at the end? Because I did have one more request I was gonna put in when we talked about the meeting. Shall we leave it till then? It's listed in the minutes at three. Okay, we're gonna leave that go then. Any other items from the minutes? Hearing none, the Chair would appreciate a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Move to approve, and second, the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three minutes discussion from the audience, from the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Everybody had a chance to go through their packet? Any concerns or questions or changes they'd like?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU eleven zero two for Jeff Davini to review an internally illuminated on-premise sign within fifteen hundred feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU eleven dash zero two with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU sixteen eighteen for Richard and Susan Repose to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU sixteen eighteen with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU sixteen thirty-nine for Troxel Properties LLC. Pam Troxel is the agent, to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU sixteen thirty-nine with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU seventeen forty-eight for Fred and Michelle Prin to review a vacation home rental in an agriculture district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU seventeen forty-eight with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review CU eighteen zero nine for Scott and Christine Gerson to review a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence in an agriculture district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU eighteen zero nine with conditions. Item number eight is conditional use permit review CU eighteen eighteen for Real Simple LLC, Randy Doughty, to review a rental home park on the subject property to include seven existing mobile home rental units and to allow an additional seven rental units in a suburban residential district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU eighteen eighteen with conditions. Item number nine is conditional use permit review CU nineteen twenty-nine for Chad and Nancy Reber to review a contractor's equipment storage yard in an agriculture district. And staff is recommending to end conditional use permit CU nineteen twenty-nine as the use has ceased for more than one year. Item number ten is conditional use permit review CU twenty-one forty-six for Jeff Davini to review an off-premise sign to be located in a highway service district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU twenty-one forty-six with conditions. And finally, item eleven is Plan Unit Development Overlay Review PU twenty-two dash zero six for Katie Smirnova and Brett Wallfish to review a Plan Unit Development Overlay for a single-family residence to be used as a music school and bed and breakfast and to include accessory structures in agriculture district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of Plan Unit Development Overlay PU twenty-two dash zero six with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Is there any of the staff would like to have polled at this time?
No, not at this time.
Any members of the Commission like to have an item polled? I'd like to have number ten polled. And then I do have a speaker request on number eleven, so we're gonna have to poll it, too. Anyone from the audience like to have one polled other than the speaker request? Okay. Chair, address a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda. Items one through nine.
Be nine, right.
With item ten and eleven removed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with items, I believe it is, three through nine. Ten, eleven would be polled for discussion. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number ten.
TJ Dureff, Environmental Planner. And that's for the off-premise sign for Jeff Davini.
Correct. And I don't have any hangups. I've got a question in regards to the square footage from the conditional use permit versus the permits that were issued, and I'd like to have it continued. Would you support something like that?
That was a typo, it should've been ten by twenty-four on that, so.
Now, is there four of them, or is there two of them?
There's two on each side of the fence, so one permit.
That's more than two fifty a side, and the conditional use permit says two hundred and fifty per each face.
I think the one face is one side, is what I understand.
The side, I see each side of the pole is one face.
Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Yeah, so he's got two hundred and forty square feet on each side, so that is a two hundred and forty square foot sign. They can be double-sided for the ordinance.
That's two hundred and forty square feet that's facing me? I don't think so.
You're looking at two signs, so you have one here.
Right.
And one down below. These are each ten by twenty-four.
Is there any on the other side?
There are on the other side, they're double-sided signs.
Correct, and ours says two fifty per each side? That's not two forty there?
So.
That's two times two forty.
So each one of these has their own sign permit, the bottom one and the top one?
Correct, but we didn't authorize that, Jason. We authorized two hundred and fifty, it says it right in the conditional use permit, two hundred and fifty each face. And I assume a face is the side of the pole. Maybe my math, you know, I know there's a lot of, you know, different math nowadays, but my math says two fifty on this side, two fifty on that side. That's the way I read it, that's the way I understood it when I voted for it.
So it says to allow a single structure with up to two off-premise non-illuminated signs. Is what the original conditional use permit.
Up to two off-premise is non-illuminated signs. Correct, that's two signs, one each side, right?
Two double-sided signs, correct.
Correct, and then we go, that the off-premise sign shall not exceed the height of thirty feet. The maximum display shall not exceed two hundred and fifty square feet on each face.
Right, so you have two faces.
No, there's two faces the other way, I'm not gonna go with that, that's playing games with words. The face, the other face of the sign is the backside, not the front. That, we just doubled it. That's why, I didn't wanna discuss this now, I think this needs to be continued, and somebody needs to convince me how you get two faces on this side and two faces on that side.
I think it should be continued so we can work with the State's Attorney to interpret the ordinance and how it reads.
I don't think we need to do this and define words here.
That would be my suggestion, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do wanna point out that thirty, it was allowed to go thirty feet. So if you go thirty feet, and what you say, those, each sign is ten feet? So just based on the thirty feet is right. So if you got thirty feet, and you go ten feet up, and then you got a sign for ten feet, and sign for ten feet, I think when we discuss this more detail, we'll find out what the intent was, and maybe how things got put on paper.
And maybe there's some misunderstanding here, but I'm just trying to say, my math doesn't equate that way, a face is front and back.
I'll make the motion to continue this particular item.
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Moved and seconded to continue this item to the next meeting? Is that fine with the staff? Next meeting, is that fine? Is that all right with the motion makers? Okay, discussion from the audience. From the Commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number eleven, and Amy Zaud asked to speak on this, so I just wanted to let you know, after he introduces the item, unless you have a specific question just on that particular one. Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Cody Zach, Environmental Planner. So item eleven is Planning Development Overlay Review. It's to review a planning development overlay for a single-family residence, uses a music school, bed and breakfast, and do include accessory structures. I don't know how much, Commissioner Johnson, do you want me to go into detail on? It's just a review, nothing's changing on it. The main items that'll change, if anything changes, will be item fifteen.
Okay, and the staff is proposing to approve?
We're recommending to approve the review, correct.
Okay. Very good. Amy?
Can I speak on fifteen rather than eleven?
Sure can. Yeah, that makes sense. We can handle this separately, we polled it, and it's easy to do. Thank you, Amy. Amy's gonna go ahead and speak down fifteen, and she heard. I should, I've gotta have you come up and at least do it here on the mic, introduce yourself. I just thought, otherwise I'm very from order here. Otherwise, I'm doing my own change in the order. Just introduce yourself and say that you'd like to go ahead and make your comments available on fifteen.
Okay, my name is Amy Zog, I live on Klondike Road, and instead of eleven, I'd like to count in on fifteen.
Thank you, Amy. All right. Everybody had a chance to review number eleven? Chair, address a motion.
I will move to approve number eleven.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve item number eleven? Discussion. Anyone else from the audience on number eleven? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number twelve.
Who seconded that on item number eleven?
Who's carrying on that? No?
Number eleven?
Yeah, who seconded?
Who seconded?
Michael.
You seconded.
Yes, I did, excuse me, yes.
Thank you. Onto item number twelve.
Megan Talmage, Planner. Agenda item number twelve is conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero two. The request is to live in the existing modular mobile home while building a single-family residence on the subject property. The applicant is Joseph McSell and Kristen Rothstein. Their agent is Jerry Peterson. It is located at thirteen seven nineteen Ruthie's Trail, and the lot size is sixteen acres. The current zoning is agriculture district, and the existing land use is residential. Their access is from Ruthie's Trail, and there is no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are listed on the screen. One, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Two, no, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. A double-wide mobile home is residential use, which conforms with the residential uses in the area. Three, no, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Four, yes, the onsite wastewater treatment system that serves the double-wide mobile home has a valid operating protocol and accesses off of Ruthie's Trail. Five, yes, the requested use should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Six, yes, the property is zoned agriculture district. Living in a double-wide mobile home while building a single-family residence is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture district. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with current comprehensive plan. Currently on the property, there is a double-wide mobile home placed in nineteen eighty-four, and a pole barn placed, where the building permit was pulled in two thousand and eight. There's a current operating permit on the property. There were no major comments or concerns in the interdepartmental review. And the new single-family residence will utilize the existing onsite wastewater treatment system, which is sized for three bedrooms. The proposed single-family residence will be for three bedrooms. If the single-family residence is more than three bedrooms, the applicant will need to apply for an onsite wastewater treatment system permit at the same time as the building permit. Construction of the single-family residence is projected to be completed late fall in two thousand twenty-three. Staff finds no issues with this request and recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash oh two.
Thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan?
Just a small, and really no big deal, but number four, the building permit for the proposed single-family residence be applied for six months. And then down in the analysis, construction will be complete fall of twenty-three, they haven't started yet?
No, they have to get this conditional use permit before they can apply for the building permit.
And it'll be done at the end of the year?
That's what they hope, they said hopefully before Christmas.
I'm just curious, I've been around a few times, and it's, that's really going.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions for Megan? I had one, your condition number two says that the address is clearly posted on the shop with living quarters.
Oh, that was not changed, so I did.
Are they there? Or not?
No, you said it was condition number four?
Two.
Two. Yep, I missed that.
Omit that then?
That was supposed to be on the new single-family residence, I apologize.
Understood, that's the only question I had.
I'll change that.
I'm just gonna list it that it's amended.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Megan? Anyone like to speak on this from the audience?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve agenda item number twelve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve. Item number twelve for staff's recommendations for conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero two with eight conditions, and we have omitted shop with a living quarters. Would that be accurate?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is it? Any discussion from the audience? From the Commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number thirteen, please.
Cody Zach, Environmental Planner. Item thirteen is Planning Development Overlay PU twenty-three dash zero one. It's to allow a planning and development overlay for a specialty resort. The applicant and landowner is Rodeo Farm and Ranch, John and Emily Rowe. Location is one-two-one-seven-five Deerfield Road. Involves nineteen point three eight acres. Current zoning is agricultural district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Deerfield Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. The zoning ordinance, section two sixteen, lists the following standards and requirements that a PU overlay district should follow. The answers are on the screens, I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district conform to the uses by right or a conditional use permit in an agriculture district. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking of an agriculture district. Number four, yes, the proposed PU D overlay district is nineteen point three eight acres. Number five, yes, the proposed PU D overlay district is owned by the applicant's managers, John and Emily Rowe. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And number seven, the answers will be on this next table. And again, the answers are on the screen, I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the use's values or enjoyment of others, of other property in the neighborhood or for purposes already permitted. Number three, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the proposed PU D overlay district contains adequate utilities, access roads, journeys, and other necessary site improvements during the building permit process, and onsite wastewater treatment system will be required. Number five, yes, the existing approach will provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion to Deerfield Road. Number six, yes, the requested use conformed to all applicable regulations of an agriculture district with an approved PU D overlay district. And number seven, yes, the future land use is identified as agriculture district, specialty type resorts are consistent within this district. Currently on the property, there's a single-family residence that was built in nineteen seventy-one, and there's another single-family residence that was built in nineteen forty. There's a forty-by-sixty utility building, and there are several accessory structures all built prior to nineteen ninety-four. This was right off our interdepartmental review. County Highway says an approach permit must be filed, and county addressing said that the road that provides access must be named. The existing address numbers are out of order with the surrounding properties to the west, and each of the cabins will require separate address for emergency service responses. She had spoke with the applicant, and said that it would be best to just name the road to alleviate any confusion. The applicants are requesting a PU D overlay to allow rental cabins, primitive campsites, caretakers' residence, horse riding and boarding, family reunion, and weddings. So that'll include up to five rental cabins, four campsites, one caretaker's residence, and the existing barn to be used as a wedding venue. The applicants do have a conditional use permit CU twenty dash fourteen, which is for bed and breakfast, which if this PU D overlay is approved, that will be reviewed and ended as it will no longer be needed. And staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's requests, as the uses requested are in harmony with either uses by right or conditional use permits within an agriculture district. So with that, staff is recommending approval of PU twenty-three dash zero one with conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
In your conditions, number eleven, quiet hours, and especially resort will be from eleven to seven? Don't we typically do ten to seven?
It varies by request, so this was taken off another specialty resort with similar uses. If the Planning Commission wants to do ten to seven, then that condition can be changed, and staff wouldn't have any reservations about doing that.
If it's consistent with other sites of the same venue, I'm not opposed to eleven.
Anything else, Cap?
No.
I drive by here every day, so I guess I'm gonna pose a few questions, I'm sure Mike was just waiting. One of the things, your condition number fifteen. I just consider that inadequate, the public and the operators are becoming more and more aware, as our new vacation home rental, so athlete pointed out, they're not even gonna have fire pits in the new ordinance, the committee proposed. I question fire pits when we've got this many assorted locations in out there, and I think we need tougher condition if we're gonna have one, so, and you know that, Cody, I bring it up every time. So we'll leave that one be, I'm not in agreement with that. I would rather see no fire pits, period, like the new ordinance is coming up. Secondly, stop sign at Deerfield. Two directions from that driveway are totally blind, the one coming up and the west from Deerfield, totally blind. And if they pull out of there with a car or a trailer, I guarantee it's a problem, it's a big problem, it's almost blind coming from the other direction. And I don't know whether we can propose or ask that a stop sign with some signage be put there to warn. We did do that on the RV park over on sixteen, across from the old log processing mill there, Forest Products, or whatever it was named there. And I think we've gotta do something in that order, because that's really blind, two out of three directions, right there. And I do think some people are gonna pull out with a trailer, and a trailer's gonna really create a problem. My next question would be parking for non-developed sites. I didn't catch that we added any parking for that, or whether you did or not, Cody, is that something? In other words, it sounded like they weren't gonna develop them right away, but they were going to be part of this permit. And if they, if they're going to do that, it would appear we have to align with some parking right now. Have you handled that?
So they have nineteen acres, and I believe that they're gonna have to provide parking spots for all those campsites, and I believe that they are. I just believe, I don't believe that he's shown them on this.
Okay.
He's in the audience, if there are any specific.
I just wanted to be aware that we've got to do that, because it looked like they were going to have those folks walk in to those, they're kinda called non-developed sites now, but they're just a campsite, and they were gonna walk into that with no drive, so we'd have to park vehicles somewhere. And then my last question would be, and you can answer this for me, how do they handle cabins, you know, versus like, say, a VHR? How does the state, or we look at cabins, in other words, these cabins are big enough to be a house. I lived, my first house was twelve hundred and fifty square feet on the main floor, and this is fifteen hundred.
So there's, I'm not aware of any size or restriction that the state would put on for a rental cabin. They go by how the property's being used is what they determine it by. So something like this, they'd have to get their license for a specialty resort, or it could be a rec resort. The state can vary on what they, what the state calls it, but they have a specific license for this request, and they don't have a size limit on how big a cabin can be.
And I'm not suggesting they're gonna do it, but at fifteen hundred feet, you certainly could parse, subdivide the property and do those houses out, couldn't they? If they had the appropriate.
If they had.
Contoning as well as.
If they had the appropriate setbacks, they could, yes, but it'd be similar to someone who did in ADU, or did a guest house, and then subdivided it out later.
It just struck them, fifteen hundred square feet seems rather large for a cabin, but that's all it had. But you didn't really, I didn't give you a chance to answer stop sign, can we recommend that?
I'm not sure, I'm getting the head shake from.
Like we did on the on-sixteenth, even though Deerfield's not a US highway?
Brittany Molliter, again, yes, we can, we've done it on other instances, we would just have to add the condition that it would be at their expense.
Yes.
That they put one, they work with our county highway to meet the requirements for it, and then they post it.
Okay, well, in that case, that's probably the only one I'd say, I think we need something in there in regards to a condition about two directions being totally. uh, two directions being totally blind.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, I appreciate your concern relative to the fire pits, but fire, having fires on a campground, that's camping, so. I think as long as they follow the regulations and they got a site that's approved for a campfire, I don't really have a problem with fifteen. As long as they follow the uh, applicable fire restrictions when and when there's a danger, you know, there's a total ban and, I mean, you're not even supposed to have barbecue grills, so. Anyhow, I don't have a problem with fifteen, but I appreciate your concern.
Oh, and I appreciate what you're saying. I agree uh, that fire pits have been a great part of it. I bring it up because it's probably our number one complaint on on uh, bed and breakfasts, vacation home rentals, all the uh, uses that involve uh, uh, our tourists. And it's very, it's very strong with the the neighbors. And then the new vacation home rental did um, ordinance, which is a special use permit. It's not the normal vacation.
Oh, campground, normally you're gonna have somebody on site that's gonna be there all the time, you know, some of these other uses. You don't know the owner's gonna be around or not. They're kind of unregulated, but campgrounds normally uh, just for their own interests, I I think they're gonna be pretty sure that people are following the proper rules.
Good point. Yeah, could we look, expanding that to the the two-step condition? Cody, would you be comfortable with that? Were they at least have to notify them about the uh, current uh, fire conditions uh, in regards to open flame or open fire?
Yeah, absolutely. And again, uh, the applicants are, live on site, so they are there on um.
That helps a lot, yes.
So, yeah, staff wouldn't be opposed to adding that to that condition.
Any other questions for Cody?
Yes. Cody, two things. Number one, we knew, my wife and I knew the folks that lived there over the years. Excuse me, and we visited at different times. Coming up that driveway, especially if you wanted to turn to Deerfield, that would be hairy. You'd have to really be careful, so. It's something that definitely needs to be looked at. The other thing is the way that the land is shaped. There's a lot of drainage in the bottom down by that little cabin. And I hope that the folks take this into consideration because from there it goes, you know, under the highway in those collars. It's just, there could be a lot of water there, that's all.
Yeah, I believe that the applicants in the past, they uh, a couple of years ago got a stormwater permit for, to do some drainage work uh, to collect some of that, to help manage some of that water on that, within that low point, um, so they are aware of the drainage.
Okay, alright.
Cody, uh, and you said your applicants were here?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and then I've got a question for you, Mike. Would you be comfortable? I'm comfortable with what Brittany was saying that that the highway representatives review it in regards to signage?
Oh, let them figure it out. Sure, they're the boss.
Yes, well, then, and you're comfortable with that too, if we were to propose that something be done as far as getting back on Deerfield? Yeah, thank you. I haven't got anything more for Cody. Anybody else? Would the applicant like to come up and we could address a couple of things like the stop sign and whatnot? Sure. Thank you. Would you introduce yourself just for the record? Anything you'd like to say, you go ahead.
Sure. John Rowe, um, yes, as I think Cody said most of it. I hear your concerns about turning on to Deerfield Road. So Jim Cowan, you knew him?
Yeah, Jim and Margaret, yep.
Right. Um, so yes, I I can see that, uh, I have to be careful. I pull out with a trailer and I I am very careful about, uh, sometimes I have to go over to High Country Guest Ranch if I have a particularly long trailer. But um, yeah, we can, we can certainly look at that. And as Cody said, we are on site. We run a Airbnb there right now. I have no problem notifying people about the fire conditions. Um, we're very careful about that right now because we're surrounded by Forest Service. So, um, yeah, this is, uh, the intent for this is to be very, um, the 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 whole nature of this property is to, is that one guest party can't see the other. There's a terrain feature and so it's 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 been to be very private and obtrusive. So, uh, and then the other thing about the uh, I lost my train of thought, sorry. Yeah, so, any other questions?
I I agree with you. The the third direction bothers me, not that any of us would ever speed on Deerfield Road. But when you come over the hill and and you're driving, if somebody's wanting to turn left, and especially if it's a longer vehicle, it's gonna be a problem. Because I've had even people can't decide whether they wanna go to the right into the that that operation. And you get on the binders pretty hard sometimes when the folks can't decide which way they're going, so. I think there's a a significant uh, an item there, but I think if you worked with the highway department signage wise, I think it could be something that's comfortable for you. We've never asked that electrical devices or anything like that be put there that I know of, but uh, I'm just saying, I think we could improve somehow so that the folks coming out of yours at least would be on their toes, I guess, is what my concern would be. Anything else for John?
Mr. Chair, I'll just point out that I thought you did a really good job on your layout. Easy to read and uh, very detailed, so appreciate that.
No problem. I wanted to get this passed, so any help I can do?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would um, ask that you explain to John what the two-step fire rule is so that he's aware of.
Oh, what I was proposing there was we've we've used in the past on vacation home rentals that they have to meet all the permit requirements, which is already in yours. And by permit requirements, I believe we use the uh, Forest Service Design Fire Pit. And then the only other, the second one said that you'd have to notify the folks so that they had the ability to find out what the local fire conditions were uh, that day. Because a lot of times the fire conditions don't allow an open flame at all in the hills. And I've seen it go on for a long time sometimes. This could be one of the years. We haven't gotten much snow this year.
Right.
That's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Well, Cody, I guess if if you could add, it's gonna change your numbering. I guess we'd add one in regards to the two-stage fire thing. And something uh, about dealing with the the highway department in regards to Deerfield Road signage. I have no problems with any of it. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So are you just adding to existing conditions or?
Yeah, that's all I was proposing.
Twenty-seven conditions?
Yeah, I guess there would be one additional for the fire and one for the stops, so it'd be, make it twenty-nine.
Okay.
That, that's a good point. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve uh, planned unit development overlay PU twenty-three oh one with uh, twenty-nine conditions.
Second. Moving second to approve per staff's recommendation PU two-three dash zero one per staff's recommendation with twenty-nine conditions. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. On to item number fourteen. And I do have folks on Zoom on this. Uh, are you folks there? Jess? Hello? Did we put you in the ozone layer? Jess, are you there?
Yes, we're here.
We are here.
Okay. What I'm going to do when you folks have the opportunity to speak, because I don't know which one of you is gonna speak and in what order. I would have you introduce all three of you for the record and then go from there and then and please announce which one of you is speaking. Uh, I assume you're speaking uh, in uh, support of item number fourteen. Is that correct? No? Yes?
We are not.
Not in support?
Larry Cooper and Jess Ginger are not in support of item fourteen.
Okay. Then you'll, you'll wanna announce that and I usually try to have the people that are in opposition speak first. Are you comfortable with that before we go on here and we'll introduce item number fourteen?
Our lawyer, Grace Strowman, is there on our behalf to speak. We are here to answer any specific questions.
Oh, wow, okay. I understand. I was totally confused, wasn't I, Jess? Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you, Jason.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number fourteen is conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero one to allow multiple family dwelling on the subject property. The applicant is Cal SD LLC. Tina Roberts is the agent and she's here if you have any questions for her. Location of the property is nine seven zero one Clarkson Road. Property is nineteen point zero five acres, currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off Clarkson Road. There is one hundred year special flood hazard area on the property. And access is off Clarkson Road. Uh, so zoning ordinance with seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They're on the screen and I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. No, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, no, a multiple family dwelling is a residential use. The requested use should not change the residential use of the property. It should not have any negative long-term effects of the use enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, no, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding properties in the area. Number four, yes, staff in the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources uh, validated the onsite wastewater treatment system for seven bedrooms. All necessary utilities appear to be in place. Number five, yes, access is off Clarkson Road via an existing approach. The requested use should not significantly affect traffic congestion. Number six, yes, the property is zoned agriculture district. Pennington County zoning ordinance section three oh three allows multiple family dwellings with an approved conditional use permit. And lastly, number seven, yes, the future land use is rural residential district, allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan viewed as twenty forty. Some property history, there is a single family residence on the property that was built in nineteen twenty-nine according to Department of Equalization records. There's an additional single family residence that was built in nineteen ninety-one according to Department of Equalization records. There's a seventeen by nineteen and a twelve by twenty foot residential addition that was approved with a building permit that was never approved, and I'll get into that in my analysis section. Uh, there is also a fifty-three by seventy-two foot garage shop and entry gate with building permit. An attached three-car garage with a loft, a forty-two by seventy-two residential addition, two onsite wastewater treatment systems with two valid operating permits. There are previous violations on the property, one for a multiple family dwelling, uh, an apartment above the garage. Uh, again, I'll get into that in my analysis section. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Emergency services stated that they're not sure how many separate households are gonna be there, but if approved, each one of them will need a separate physical address and that's addressed as a condition of approval. County highways stated they had no comments because there was an approach permit on file. Ordinance enforcement stated this will clear the current violation. Again, the county environmental planner stated that the applicant has approved, has an approved septic system on file based on the septic system that was installed and inspected on March fifteenth, twenty twenty, or two thousand and one, the system could accommodate a seven-bedroom house with a garbage disposal. There were no other objections or concerns received. Onto the analysis section. Staff's analysis, the request is that there have been at least two residences on the subject property since nineteen ninety-one according to building permits, violations, and Department of Equalization records. According to Department of Equalization records, the current owner purchased the property on October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Construction of the seventeen by nineteen and twelve by twenty residential additions under county building permit nineteen ninety-one COPP nine seven three seven are estimated to have been completed in nineteen ninety-one without an approved building permit. So some history on that building permit, uh, October thirty-first of nineteen ninety-one, staff notified the previous owner that although construction already begun, a building permit was required. November sixth of that year, the previous owner applied for a building permit. November fifteenth of that year, staff notified the previous owner of the concerns regarding the application and the permit was never approved. Uh, staff did do a site visit to the property and noted that these, and were, was identif, was able to identify these additions. Uh, there's a pantry and the photo on the screen. Uh, I did not go in there, so I didn't know exactly how deep it was, but I can see from the outside that it did match the description of what the building permit was applied for. Uh, this is the other addition, looks to be a four-season sort of room, a windowed deck, I guess. Uh, moving on to the forty-two by seventy-two residential addition that was constructed under building permit two thousand and one COPP zero one zero six, uh, which are in the photos here on the screen. This addition was completely permitted as finished space. The addition contains a kitchen uh, as well as these two rooms that were never permitted. Uh, there was a pool in this area at one time. Uh, the previous owner laid down a a floor and constructed these two partitioned rooms. You can see, this is where that first photo was taken from up here at this entry door, uh, looking down into the bedrooms or into the rooms. Uh, this is the kitchen that is also in that area. No building permits were ever approved for the addition of those two rooms. Um, our zoning ordinance does define bedrooms. Uh, it states any portion of a dwelling which is so designed to furnish a minimum isolation necessary for a sleeping area. Uh, went a little further and looked in the American Planning Association's dictionary, uh, which defined it as a fully enclosed portion of a building designed or intended to be used for sleeping purposes. Uh, without the ceilings on these rooms, uh, staff doesn't feel that these rooms meet the definition of a bedroom. So with that, this portion of the house can't be considered its own living dwelling as part of the multiple family dwelling. Uh, moving on to the three-car garage. Let me, sorry about that. So just so you can try to get your bearings here, um, this is the nineteen twenty-nine single family residence that was there. Uh, this is the garage, the three-car garage, which is what I'm gonna talk about next. Uh, and this would be the loft area of that for your reference. So that was, uh, building permit was pulled for that under two thousand COPP zero zero nine three. Uh, but that was for a three-car garage and an unfinished loft. So at that time, well, uh, and then just so you can get your, get an idea of what I'm talking about. So there is a kitchen in that area above the garage. Uh, there's also a living room and three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Uh, this is one of the bedrooms. Where my picture is lent. Uh, there are two other bedrooms just like this and then there are two additional bedroom or bathrooms and a living space. Uh, so back in twenty fourteen, there was a violation that was opened on the property on May eighteenth or May eighth of twenty fourteen due to the previous owner renting an apartment above the garage on the subject property. Therefore, it's known that the sixteen hundred square feet of unfinished space in the loft area had to have been finished between February twenty-third, two thousand and May eighth of twenty fourteen. The violation refers to the finished space as a rented apartment above the garage, uh, also known as separate living quarters. Therefore, at that time, the structure met the definition of a multiple family dwelling that would have required a conditional use permit. It's unclear what kind of resolution was reached between the previous owner and the planning department, but that violation was closed on June fourth of twenty fourteen without any additional building permits for the finished space or a conditional use permit for a multiple family dwelling uh, being drawn at that time. Subject property is located within the platting or the city of Rapid City's three-mile plating jurisdiction and was last platted in twenty fifteen, which would have been after the loft above the garage area was finished. During that review of that plant through the city, I did reach out to them and talk to them. There were concerns about the dead-end road system at that time. Um, but nothing was ever, no action was ever taken on that and the plant was ultimately approved. Uh, February second of this year, staff did conduct a site visit and verify that there are two single family residences on the property. Uh, one of those being the original single family residence that was built in nineteen twenty-nine and then the three-bedroom loft above the three-car attached garage. Uh, there did appear to be somebody living there at the time, uh, and speaking with the property manager. It sounds like there's a caretaker that does reside there. Uh, Ms. Roberts travels frequently and having somebody there to take care of the place is ideal for her, so she rents out a portion of the property to him. Uh, with that, uh, kinda where we're at now is that the current owner is responsible for paying all building permit, conditional use permit and associated penalty fees regarding the use of a multiple family dwelling on the property to include the three-bedroom loft area, the seventeen by nineteen and twelve by twenty residential additions. Approval of this conditional use permit will allow the applicant to bring the property into compliance with the Pennington County zoning ordinance. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero one with condition.
Questions for Jason.
Mr. Chair. So Jason, if I was a realtor, in your opinion, and I was going to list this property for sale, how would I best describe it? Just your opinion.
Well, by our definition in the zoning ordinance, it meets the definition of a multiple family dwelling because there are two separate living areas.
Like a duplex. That's two units.
Could be, yeah.
Okay, just, and then when you did your inspection, what was, what was the property being used for at that time?
Residential use. Like I said, a portion of it was being rented out to a caretaker at that point, but Ms. Roberts does live there on the property in the main portion of the residence.
That's all I got for now.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Other questions? Go ahead, Michael.
When I read through, through the analysis, when I got done, I thought to myself, what did I just read?
There's a lot.
I mean, if we were to pass this, are you confident that this will square up eventually?
I do. Well, basically what we have here is a previous property owner who created a multiple family dwelling, sold it to Ms. Roberts, and then we received an ordinance violation complaint about the property for the improvements that the previous owner did to it. Ms. Roberts didn't do any of these improvements to the property, she simply purchased it in twenty twenty.
It just seems, good luck, let's put it that way. There's a lot of work here.
Right.
So that, I guess that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Additional questions for Jason? I'll just make one here, but, and perhaps, you know, nowadays, and I don't know when it came into existence, but when you sell a piece of property, you gotta do a pretty long disclosure list of what things you're aware of have been done that aren't necessarily kosher, including the property, let alone the building. Whether it had black mold, all sorts of different things anymore. And it's a sworn-to document that you sign now when you list a building or a property for sale. And I don't know when it came into existence, but I would certainly think that's involved with the new owner. And I have a lot of compassion for the new owner. You run into these things, I think, in rural type of things. What the city was doing, and I'll just throw in a comment, I'm not sure how this got by in their review in what, fourteen or fifteen you indicated?
Fifteen.
Now, my question was, will your, and my biggest concern was those bedrooms without the ceiling, without a doubt, and I'm sure they concerned you. Will your conditions you have listed cover that for the new owners so that we can address that and get that handled?
I don't believe I put a condition in there stating that you had to remove those bedrooms or anything to that.
Or put a ceiling on them. I think it's a fire safety thing, isn't it, from building permits?
There's no egress windows on those bedrooms either, so that's another reason that we can't classify those as bedrooms.
Run that by me again, what?
There are no egress windows to get out of those rooms.
Oh, ingress, egress.
Right, so by code, we can't allow those to be bedrooms either.
But can we know it exists? In other words, can we just look the other way? And not, not end up involved with that? When we see pictures of it here, a planning commission and a planner?
Sure, we can make a condition that the bed's being removed.
I think you gotta do something for safety. I don't want to be, you know, my estate, because that's when it'll happen, is after I'm gone, my estate gets sued.
Right. Or the doors be removed.
Yeah, or something. I don't know whether the other commissioners are concerned about that at all, but without a ceiling is a grave concern in a fire. I doubt that's why they have the enunciator equipment to get you out of a room or to let you know there is a fire. You're not going to know until you're gone in this one. Just my own feeling from building a lot of things, this is way off the beaten path and dangers.
Right.
Thank you, I understand now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I guess one more question. If we approve this, if we do, there's no way they can add another building. It's just, we'd be approving what is there right now and nothing more could be added.
Correct. Yeah, we'd be approving the multiple family dwelling for the space that's finished above the garage and for the original house that was there in nineteen twenty-nine.
So the current owner could go either way. She could, or they could go for profit and try to rent something out for, for income, or they could just use it for their immediate family without any income, so.
Right.
We don't have any reg, is there anything in the conditions that would, if it, if it's used as an income property, that would, you know, follow the criteria for an income property relative to state standards?
I don't think we have anything in our ordinance that would cover that, so I couldn't make it a condition.
I have a question, Karen.
Go ahead, Karen.
The under-analysis, it says at least two residences have been identified on the property since nineteen ninety-one, and earlier it says that you can't have two residences on one property, so is that somewhere in all this analysis that, is that going to be handled?
Right, so that was back in nineteen ninety-one when that original building permit was drawn for the residential addition. Staff did let the previous owner know at that time that you can't have two residences on that property. Somewhere between two thousand and eight and twenty fourteen, that additional residence above the garage was added.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
There's a number of issues on this property that need to be disclosed or should have been disclosed when they sold it. I want to get into those, but some of the bedrooms there, you know, there's tons of non-conforming bedrooms that are in use, but they need to, you know, one of your conditions could be that, again, those are not used for sleeping areas.
Sure, yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to adding that in.
Would that be?
Go ahead, Karen.
Would that be part of items H and I under your analysis, bringing things up to code and fixing all the prior mistakes that were there? I mean, those were not permitted rooms, so in a permit analysis, they wouldn't allow that necessarily go forward. So is that kind of already within the conditions of approval that you have here? If that was to be inspected today, what would happen with those rooms?
Yeah, if you specifically, if the commission specifically wants those rooms to not be used as sleeping quarters, then we should probably add a condition in there to specify that.
Thank you, Karen. I guess I was on the same, I assumed that when we pass this, in other words, they're paying for building permits and we're kind of agreeing with bedrooms that don't meet any sort of criteria. So he hit it more on the head than I did, yes. Thank you. Anything else for Jason? And did you say your applicant was here and did he want to speak?
Yes, sir, she's here.
All right, well, let's reserve, let's go ahead and do that, and then we'll make an opportunity available after. We do have a number of speaker requests forms on this. Please introduce yourself, just for the record.
Of course.
And go ahead and first state whatever you'd like, and then we may have some questions.
No problem. My name is Tina Roberts. I am the owner of the property under the Cal SD LLC. My late husband and I pre-purchased that property in October, as you see by the documentation. There is a set of disclosures. It was disclosed that these, this property had all the permits necessary and that these permits specifically were called out in the disclosure agreement. So there's a bit of fraud in that, we'll take that off-site. There is a fire system on the property. Night security, just installed six thousand dollars worth of monitored systems throughout the entire property. So whether it's where those non-conforming bedrooms are, which are just their sleeping areas, I don't have a problem with that. The actual structure is the structure, it is what it is. I haven't changed anything, I haven't done anything to the property. I live in the property, I reside in South Dakota full-time, I do travel for my work, and the previous owner is present. He's on the Zoom and probably can't answer any other questions that you might have, but I'm happy to answer questions about it as I bought it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Tina, how many water services go to that property?
At this time that I'm aware of, one water service goes to that property and has since nineteen seventy, when the Water Company was incorporated around in that time period, the service to that property was existing prior to that.
So is that water service, is it metered?
It is not metered. I have suggested to the water board, I actually happen to be president of the water board as well, I've recused myself from this position, obviously, but I've suggested that we meter all of the neighborhood to, so that there's material use to actually be able to monitor that. Our current, most recent investigation of that, which I requested as the president of that water company, was the use of our water, which we have the capacity of thirty-five million gallons, and annually, our water company uses four point two five million gallons.
Okay, then, how many electric services do you have as far as meters? Do you just read one meter, or is there two?
No, there's just one, there's one master meter to that property.
Okay, so if you did run it out, then it would just be kind of a guesstimate on what the utility cost would be because water and the, it's just one service for the whole property. How about, is it propane, natural gas?
There are two, one thousand gallon propane plus a two hundred, I'm sorry, another five hundred gallon propane. There's propane all over that property. It's over nine thousand square feet. It's a lot too electrical.
Right.
Yeah, it's a lot to propane. I live there by myself.
Trying to understand the utility of the property.
Yeah, no, that's the utility.
Looks like one property, but one complex property.
Yeah, it's been added on to many, many times.
I think that's all I got for now. Septic systems, you know, a lot of bathrooms, and I see some documentation, they think there's only one, one thousand gallon tank, and so I'm assuming there's got to be more than one, one thousand gallon.
As you can see by the documentation, the planning commission has covered that. There are two septic systems, and they've approved that those septic systems are compliant.
So we're comfortable that the present septic system will handle the current use of the property? Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Tina. Other questions for Tina? I have one. Do you understand what we were talking about, our concerns about the two bedrooms without the ceiling?
Absolutely, I do. That's why I brought up the fire system, because that room specifically has multiple, also, I'm not defending the bedrooms, I'm just saying that the entire property, I have a hundred and forty acres, not just this, this house is on that nineteen, but the entire, I own the entire canyon as well in conjunction with the nature conservancy. So there's no one more concerned about fire than I, which is why I spent six thousand dollars in a monitored system to have it. So yes, there are fire, yes, I understand your concerns about the bedroom.
I guess my biggest concern is even if you had fire safety, I don't know where it's at in conjunction with those. I don't know what it's set for, but I guarantee you the fire's going to be on top of those, who's ever in those bedrooms if it's in the area before they hear any trigger. That's how quickly it moves, it moves in.
I would assume that for the whole house, sir, yes. I will tell you that.
But that's why they have sheetrock is to protect you. That's, that's actually to keep the fire on the other side of the wall.
I understand.
Well, I, even a fire system does not eradicate my concern about those bedrooms.
Then you shouldn't be concerned about my whole house because it's made a hundred percent of wood with barely any sheetrock in it. Which I am as well. The, this is a stack of mail from all the previous tenants that have been in the house prior to my ownership, a very small stack of mail, and I do have emails from when the previous owner rented it, explaining how much he actually rented that pool house for and other areas of the house. So it has been being rented. I don't plan on renting it, my family stays upstairs. I have a caretaker on staff, that's it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Tina, when you bought the property, was it listed on the open market?
It was listed on the open market.
And I don't have a listing, I'd love to see the listing to see how this thing was marketed.
I don't remember.
Single-family residence, income property, duplex?
I don't remember exactly, I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that in this manner. There is another cabin that we have a VHR permit for that's maybe five hundred, seven hundred yards from this property that was built in nineteen oh nine. That was, when we purchased it, we purchased it knowing that we would also VHR that, and we have, and we have a conditional use permit on that piece.
So when you purchased it, did you do it more for a single-family residence or an income property, or both?
A hundred percent for single-family residence. My husband was, who passed away four months after we purchased the property. We had expectations of having, well, he actually had a whole entire hunting group of family and friends come that fall where we, that's where those beds came from in those rooms.
Sure.
Because we had twelve people staying on-site. For Thanksgiving, I had twelve people staying on-site. So I, we only have always wanted to use it for our own family and friends. There is, between the home, the first home, and the, what is the, above the garage, there is no locking door. It's a door, it's a Dutch door, in fact. It's a big, thick wood Dutch door, it can't lock, there is no locking mechanism on it. And there is no locking mechanism, there's an interior locking mechanism, but their only way to get into those three bedrooms is either through the front door of the house or through a side door of the house. So it's not ideal for renting.
So the pictures of the two bedrooms, or two rooms that had beds in them without the ceiling, you could take the beds out and put desks in there and just say you've got two offices.
There was desks in one of them, I believe, when we first bought it, but there were beds in it. Someone was living there and renting it at the time that we viewed the house and purchased the house, and they were actually evicted at that time, I believe, or left.
But the rooms could be converted, the storage.
A hundred percent, yeah. There was actually, in one of those rooms, you noticed some, one of the pictures had some foosball tables. There's a foosball table and an air hockey table, which we actually use. We celebrated Christmas down there in that kitchen with that bar with a bunch of family and friends and had a really good time. It's really nice, we had a fourteen-foot Christmas tree, it was beautiful.
There's no questions for Tina. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go to the speaker requests, and Tina, you'll certainly have an opportunity to come back up if you care to. I just, for the record, I wanted to note that we do have a submission, a written submission from Larry Tuber, and we have a written submission from a John Shaq. Shaq, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Shaq? Okay, we do have those written. We, just for the record, and I wanted to make sure that the commission members do have those in hand. Now we're going to go to the Zoom. Are you still there?
Yes, we are still here. Thank you.
All right, we're going to, just to try to stay with you, just to make sure that we don't lose you. In the meantime, I'm going to put you on ahead of the speaker request forms that I do have in hand. Any that, anyone that would like to speak, please introduce yourself for the record and go ahead, and then go on to the next person. We can't really see you, but we certainly can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Larry Tuber. Jeff Strowman is there to make comments in person for me. I want to make a couple comments. Jason's report has a few factual errors. Those have been outlined in my written submittal. Number two is, the property was sold as a single-family residence, was represented as such by the realtor. It was all SD LLC. Tina Roberts had no authority at that LLC at the time, she was not a manager, she was not a member, she was not a party, she was not an agent. In fact, I do have a legal deposition from April of two thousand and twenty-two when she was asked if she has any authority to execute for that LLC, and she admitted she did not. So this matter of the misrepresentations of the real estate and the like, the representations of the real estate, was it was a two partial sale? The guest cabin was a vacation rental, was properly permitted, and the permitting documents were provided to the current agent of the LLC. The main residence was built and primarily occupied and represented as a single-family dwelling. With that, I'll leave it to Mr. Strowman.
Please come forward. Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and go ahead and take off where you'd like to take off from.
Thank you, Chair. Greg Strowman, on behalf of Larry Tuber and Spring Canyon Ranch, ranches, they own the property across the street. And in addition to the things that Mr. Tuber, Dr. Tuber put in his written submission, I'd just like to highlight a few things. Number one, this, the, the record that the planning department used to make their report and their assertions in there, there's some places where there's not any record evidence to support it, and particularly, and I'll get into that when I get, get to my summation, but looking at the criteria that was used to give the recommendation to the planning commission, the first criteria was will the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare? The department said, no, we disagree with that assertion, because if this is divided into multiple units, there will be an excess over the county ordinance regarding the number of units that can be on a single access road for fire safety. I believe there's already forty units on that road, and are very close to it, and adding additional three units would be volatile of the two thousand eight ordinance. And also, the proposed ordinance, as I see from the county's website, the current ordinance on the nine, section nine oh four dead-end roads, says a dead-end road system must not exceed forty units and two miles in cumulative length. And then, in what I see as the proposed, it says that a dead-end road system in all zoning districts, a dead-end road system must not exceed forty dwelling units and two miles in cumulative length. So I think if we have multiple units in that one footprint, then we are exceeding that criteria for that ordinance. Second, and I believe that it does endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Then I believe in number three, will the condition, will the establishment of the conditional use impede the normal and ordinary, orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district? Again, if this sets a precedent, there could be other parcels in that that would exceed that, if they subdivided or had additional units or conditional use permits, that would again exceed the forty units and increase traffic, and it would impede the normal and safety and orderly development of the area. Number four, will adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary site improvements be provided? Again, there's no plans, we're aware of, to create an additional road or access road, so that wouldn't, we differ with the department's finding on, on number four, criteria number four. And in conjunction with that, number five, have adequate measures been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress, so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets? There's nothing that's been done that would, to indicate that access would be sufficient as it is. I also think the chair's point about the sleeping areas, I don't believe there's any egress windows that are required for fire safety in those areas also. Then, the last thing, I guess in addition to what was in the written submission, there's no evidence that the multifamily use would entitle the applicant to be grandfathered in for a multifamily, for a conditional use permit here, because South Dakota law states that any lawful use, lot, or occupancy of land or premises existing at the time of the adoption of the zoning ordinance may be continued, even though the used lot or occupation does not conform to the provisions of the ordinance. However, if the non-conforming use, lot, or occupancy is discontinued for a period of time of more than one year, any subsequent use, lot, or occupancy of the land or premises shall conform with the zoning ordinance. There's no evidence in this case to show that there has been a continuous non-conforming use that would entitle the applicant to be grandfathered in for a conditional use permit under these facts.
Thank you, Mr. Strum. Questions for Mr. Strum?
I have a question.
Now, go ahead, go ahead.
It was your client, Larry Tuber, that sold this property?
I believe he had, yes, he had a realtor.
So these issues that you're raising were there prior to the sale, this just seems interesting.
Well, I, I do know that he listed it with a reputable realtor to walk him through the process. I was not involved in that sale, so I can't speak beyond that, other than to say that I know that the realtor that he had is a very experienced and well-known realtor.
Ron?
My question would be, now, we're getting tied up with single-family, multifamily, so what if we call it single-family, but an immediate owner and her relatives could use it, however, that would fall in the guidelines of the water and the septic? Because that's my understanding, is that Tina wants to buy this home, she bought it as a single-family residence, but she just wanted to kind of clean things up so that she could own the home as a single-family residence, but still have the ability, because obviously the real estate itself is massive enough with the bathrooms and all that, that she just wants to be able to invite with family or relatives thereof. So with that being said, could you add a condition that, under her ownership, she could do what she's trying to do, and if she sells the property, then that's where we have to address the multifamily?
So I guess, Commissioner, you're saying that would there be a condition that it would only be for her individual and?
I think that would be a compromise, I'm just kind of kicking tires right now.
I, I, I can see that as, as being workable. I, I do believe that there's, I know that previously, Ms. Roberts was before the commission objecting to some vacation home rentals, and it was my understanding then that she was interested in making vacation home rentals in this particular structure. If that's changed now, then I, I don't have personal knowledge of that. But the other thing about the, whether that could be restricted to just her, at least, at least when we do C U Ps at the city, I know that they, they're reevaluated after a year, would this one be reevaluated then, if that condition was in there?
I wouldn't leave that up to the planning department, if that's something that we could consider, and that might not even be.
Could I briefly speak? This is Megan Kruger with the State's Attorney's Office. So I don't believe that you could include a condition like that, because our C U Ps are specifically allowed to be transferable. So you could include a condition that you can't rent this for profit, but I don't believe that you could put in there that this C U P would end automatically if you decided to rent it for profit. Later on, we have specific processes that have to be followed per our ordinance.
And I, I think that's a compromise, in my opinion.
Yeah. You could certainly add a condition that says that she couldn't rent it for profit, that it's to be used for family use only, but you can't really change the use of the property. I mean, the, the way that this property can be used is multifamily, because there are two completely separate living spaces in one structure.
I think the key word we have to look at is the intended use, and if the intended use is family and relatives and not income, then we identify that and make that a condition.
I'd like to ask the applicant a question.
Okay, she's going to have an opportunity to come back up, and we can ask them. Mr. Strum, help me, I didn't understand your explanation about the Cal South Dakota LLC versus Tina as a representative, I didn't understand that.
Okay, that came from Dr. Tuber, but I think what he was referring to was a deposition in a, in a litigation, where she testified under oath that she was not, did not have authority to act on behalf of Cal S D L L C, because she was not a member or a manager of that particular entity.
Did your client then see Cal South Dakota LLC as the owner?
I, I'm not, I believe that they're the owner, I, I guess I, I don't, I haven't seen the deed, but I'm assuming that they are.
Yeah, that, that, I find a real twist in there somewhere.
There, there's a lot of twists, Mr. Chair, in this, in this particular situation.
I see a real twist in that somewhere.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Strum? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jess or Mr. Tuber, was there anyone else in the Zoom call that would care to speak before I go on with the speaker request?
May I make a comment, Mr.?
Certainly.
Two things, number one, no one, I, and I don't think anyone around has any objection to the use of the single-family residence for family and extended family, friends, that sort of thing, private use of your house. However, multifamily in this application is additional addresses, up to four units, and for economic benefit, those are the objections. Economic benefit, the additional addresses, and this is the, the backdoor splitting of a single water share that's going to result in further litigation as it relates to the water company. Now, back to the Cal S D L L C to clarify. Cal S D L L C purchased that property, and Chris Welch, who's deceased, was the member manager, he was not married. Tina did not purchase this property. Cal S D L L C purchased this property, she was not married to the principal of the company, she was not a member, she was not a manager, she had no authority to act on behalf of Cal S D L L C, and she was not an agent. She, her, her role with Cal S D L L C today, we understand to be as the agent, however, we've never seen a document to that effect. But we do have a deposition where she misrepresented to a realtor that she could act on the authority of Cal S D L L C by signing documents. So that, I just want to clarify that, she's actually the second owner after the original sale. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jason?
Just to clarify, on the South Dakota Secretary of State website, Tina Roberts is listed as the agent for Cal S D.
With the Secretary of State at the present?
Correct.
Thank you. Is she listed as the managing partner, then?
她是 listed as a manager-managed corporation, and the agent is Tina Roberts.
Okay, thank you. That saves the question, then. Anything else for Mr. Tuber before we go on with the speaker request? Thank you. We're going on with our speaker requests. We've got one from Tim Osterlo.
Tim Osterlo, owner, I'm here with my wife, we got representation, we live in Copper Oaks subdivision, across the canyon from the said property, that's requested the conditional use permit. What I have here, and just for clarification, with this request was a multifamily dwelling. You know, if we're going back to that, would it keep that request as a single-family dwelling from what that last discussion was? Just a question out there, too, you know, that would, some clarification as though that we had, but anyway, I got a petition here from thirty-two signatures through Copper Oaks for adjacent and surrounding properties, that we would strongly request that the board vote against the conditional use permit, and we would respectfully request that should the property owner desire a change in the current zoning or land use, they proceed through the proper channels with the Pennington County Planning and Zoning Commission, and rectify, you know, the issues that were laid out at the meeting so far. The other thing I would like to point out, can I go back to the map on here?
Sure, Jason will handle it for you, so you can continue.
So with this map, with the subject property showing here, is we, on the south side, Plan South, is the Copper Oaks subdivision. What you see with the dotted line going through here is our emergency egress, in case of a fire, that goes through the property and up through and uses Clarkson Road as our evacuation route. So that's a concern on mine, is this dead end with additional, over top of the forty dwellings, we have, I think, another seventy-five dwellings on the other side of the canyon, that's our emergency egress route also.
Mr. Chair, so, let's go back twenty years, whatever, was this property ever used for income purposes, nightly rentals?
I can't answer that.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, because if it was, and you got that many bedrooms, you could probably get six, eight guests, and they, and those guests might not be a family, they could just be different individuals, and they each want to drive a car, so then you're going to have eight cars. I'm trying to figure out what it was used for in the past, and what it's used for now, and what's the difference? We're just trying to clear up some stuff that shouldn't have happened a long time ago. To me, it's the same use, maybe even less with the single-family residence, with family. That's where I'm getting a little confused, it's just got one water service.
Ron?
And a, and a single-family residence is what it's currently zoned, agriculture is a single-family dwelling, right? According to this conditional use permit, they're requesting it to be multifamily dwelling.
Megan Kruger with the State's Attorney's Office. So because of the way the structure is built, they have to get a C U P, because it is built as a multifamily residence, it is not a single-family residence. It meets our definition under our ordinance as a multifamily residence. So you cannot have this be a single-family residence, if it was, she wouldn't have to come here and get anything. I just want to clarify that.
Megan, before you step down, too, and the planning commission can't make a condition that changes the, the basic request that the petitioner is making, can we? That's what we'd be doing if we did some of this other, we'd be changing the whole basis of her application, wouldn't we?
If this building was built differently, it could be a single-family residence, but it has two separate living spaces in one structure. So the only way to make it a single-family residence is to take the stuff out, or give her a C U P. Those are the ways to fix it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tim, you still have the floor, if you want?
I'm good.
Questions?
I guess what we're trying to do is mitigate safety relative to ingress and egress, and water usage, that's kind of what I've seen. And so if there's some kind of a restriction or a condition that would limit that for being for profit, I would think that would probably address both of those. That's where I was trying to find this compromise, because I don't want to see that to be an income property, because I, I think that's what you folks don't want, because then you're going to see increased water usage in an area that's already, water's an issue, and ingress and egress in a forested area relative to wildfires, so I understand all that. But if we sit there and say, use it for single-family residence, call it multifamily, but you're not going to use it for an income basis or revenue generator, I'm just trying to find a compromise.
Thank you, Ron. Tim, you said you had a petition that was based on folks from Copper Oaks?
Correct.
Would it be possible for you to supply that, please, so that we could at least see what the wording was for copy, and we'll get that back to you? Please give it to Jerry. And he wants that returned, Jerry, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Any other questions for Tim? Thank you. All right, we've got Bill Coulson.
Let me say that I hope to make this a little less.
Bill, we got to have you introduce yourself first, or you're really unofficial.
I'm Bill Coulson.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your service to our county, and thank you for the time it takes to consider these issues today. They are significant, I would say. for the time it takes to consider these issues today. They are significant, I would say. So I've written my comments. I'm happy to leave them with you when I go, after I'm finished. My name is Bill Coulson. I'm a resident of Spring Canyon Estates in Pennington County. I speak as a member of our Spring Canyon Water Company, a small, private, not-for-profit that serves around 40 single-family dwellings in our neighborhood. We employ a private firm that maintains the system, but the governing board of directors is made up of nine volunteer neighbors that are chosen by the membership. Board member terms are two years with no term limits. Personally, I have served on the board for most of the last 40 years, the majority of them as board president. Please know that I say this only to hopefully enhance my credibility. What I say today does not represent any decision that has or may be made by the board of directors. So let me begin by saying, in the application for the CUP, I disagree personally with criteria one and criteria number two. I believe there is serious risk, potential risk, by this being granted in our neighborhood, because it would allow additional CUPs, multifamily dwellings, to exist in a number of other lots in our neighborhood. That worries me tremendously. Let me give you a little bit of an update on our system itself. The association and much of the infrastructure was developed in the 1960s. As Tina mentioned, formerly it was created as a business selling water in about 1970. We own two wells that deliver water from the Madison Formation aquifer. Each well is approximately 1,000 feet in depth. The two combined wells are capable of pumping about 65 gallons of water per minute. The number that Tina gave you, 35 million gallons a year, that would be if those wells ran full-time. They can't run full-time, and they don't run full-time. As she also said, we used about 4.5 million gallons of water in this last year. The water system includes only 15,000 gallons of storage. So the pumps kick on when the tanks call for storage, water flows uphill, fills the tanks. When the tanks are full, it shuts off, and water flows the other way to the residents in the community. It's worked very well for our limited population of about 40 homes. Each of the well pumps and associated equipment are about a decade old and have a lifespan of about 12 years. If we had to replace both of those pumps today, the cost for just the equipment would be about $15,000 or more. And then a thousand-foot well, it's a lot of work to pull those pumps and reinstall them. Opinion and speculation about this CUP and multifamily residence in our neighborhood. Our water system is capable of providing water to our current membership and perhaps a small number of additional ones. Again, in my opinion, and that of many others, a large number of additional users would probably result from the passage of this CUP would likely overtask our system and create significant hardship to our neighborhood. Current bylaws state that each member lot entitled to water may serve only one principal residence, associated outbuildings, and surrounding landscaping. Ron, you made reference to that several times. In my opinion, although not legally confirmed, this provision of the bylaws would prohibit service to multifamily dwellings. Should it be determined that this language is not sufficient to exclude multifamily dwellings, I anticipate the board will take necessary action to strengthen the written language. The increased population created by multifamily residents, this has been addressed also already, the increased population created by multifamily residences in our neighborhood would amplify the current risk created by the dangers we face due to neighborhood access and egress being limited solely to Clarkson Road. The point that was mentioned by, is it Tim?
Yep.
The point that was mentioned by Tim, I know where that road is that connects Clarkson Road with Copper Oaks. You got to have a really capable vehicle to do that. So good luck, good luck. Because we thought about, could we use that road to get out as well? And it's a real steep grade from our side, and a real steep downgrade from Tim's side. So, anyway, this concern's been previously addressed before the county commission. The risk is even more serious when you consider that we live in a heavily wooded area, very susceptible to wildfire. I'm open to any questions that you might have. That concludes my remarks.
Questions for Bill?
Mr. Chair, I still go back to what the property was used for before, because five years ago, it's exactly the way it is today. Why weren't you guys here five years ago telling us this until after somebody buys under the premise that she's buying something that could be legally permissible? That's where I'm getting caught up in this. It's the same property. It hasn't been added, hasn't been reduced. It's the same identical property. I don't know what it was used for before, but I'm guessing if you had a water meter around there, you wouldn't really see any significant change from what it was used for before to what it's currently being used for now. That's where I'm trying to get a hold of things.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, our neighborhood was first developed in the 60s. My parents lived out there, my wife's parents lived out there, and a few others lived out there. And that's, it's grown since that time. But when the water system was put in, it was done with a simple, single-family neighborhood in mind. None of the main lines are really trackable. There aren't any trace wires in any of them. There are in some that we've replaced over the years, but for the most part, that's not true. So people ask us, you know, what does the layout really look like? It's hard to describe that with any specifics at all. It truly is. So neighbors and I went around a few years ago, and we put water shut-off valve signs every place that there's a water shut-off valve for a residence. And there's some main shut-offs as well. The tanks on the hill were added about 1990 or so that had 15,000 gallons. Before that time, we had two metal tanks on the property that's now owned by Mr. Tuber. Those were taken down and sold, so they're not on the property at all any longer. So I guess to further answer your question, our neighborhood was designed to be a simple home to people that love the Black Hills. That's what it was designed. So a lot of that stuff that we probably should have done years ago didn't get done. I mean, I'll accept my share of responsibility for that, but that's just the way it is. So now things have become life in general, and life in Spring Canyon Estates has become more complicated. So we're trying to protect what we have as much as we can. I said these same things to you about a year ago when some rental property was being built in our neighborhood. I think the work that Larry Tuber has done in terms of building those pieces of property is great. It really is. Not unsightly at all. So I worry about the future, though. I do. I worry about what happens from here forward. If more multifamily residences are built in our neighborhood because of approval of this one, I worry it will create serious issues for us all.
Mr. Chair, I can't predict the future, but I don't think it's intent for us to allow multifamily. I think what we're trying to do is just cure something that shouldn't have ever happened in the first place, and it's just more of a fix. I don't think any of us would condone multifamily residents in your, in your subdivision going.
I hope you write that down, Ron. You know, I mean, the reality is.
Well, I certainly, well, I don't know how much weight it'll carry, but.
It sets a precedent. That's what worries me. It sets a precedent.
Well, I totally agree there, but I don't think that's intent what we're doing today. But how is the water district funded? No, it's, there's some.
We're not metered. That was mentioned earlier. We are not metered. Every resident in the neighborhood pays $60 per month for water. And by nature, we're pretty conservative with the water that we use. Do we have problems? No. Before we drilled the second well, which has to be pretty close to my house, that's the most productive of our two wells, we had signs up all the time, at least a couple times a month, saying, no water use today because the pump's down, or the storage is empty, or whatever. That happens rarely today, rarely. In fact, I can't really think of the last time it happened, except that we have an electronic system on the pumps that tells, or the tanks that tell the pumps when they need to turn on and off. And that failed. But I knew it failed right away. I'm close to the well, so I was out of water, and I walked out, and I put the well pump on hand, and we were fine, and we got it fixed, and everything's great. But again, that's our simple approach to living. That's the way it works. If we didn't have people in the neighborhood that were willing to take a role in keeping us with water and other things, we'd be in trouble. We just would.
Is there a rule of thumb on how many gallons per day the typical individual uses?
I can't answer that question for you. I, you know, I think that the number that Tina quoted and that I quoted, that's what we use in about a year, a little over 4 million gallons of water so far.
So if you took 40 residents there and divided into that, that'd tell you how much per resident.
Pretty close. Some use, some use more than others, because some have a little bit more irrigation than others might have. In my home right now, it's just my wife and I. But in other homes, there are children living there and so on, and they, they use more water. Kids like long showers, right? I mean.
I was just trying to put some numbers to this particular property. So if there's eight full-time residents, and they use 50 gallons a day for 365 days, that'd be 146 gallons, 146,000 gallons. So, but I'm, it'd been nice if we had the meter. So I think that, I think the concern is, number one, is you're afraid that if this gets passed today, this is going to set precedence that we're going to do this. And I, I don't see that, and I don't know if the other commissioners do. But then also, are we, if we approve this today, is there going to be more water usage going in the future than there has in the past? And that's where I'm trying to, because I don't want to see you guys have problems with your water system.
Am I worried, or are the neighbors that I've visited with casually about this, are they worried that what Tina's proposing is going to increase water usage at her residence? No, absolutely not. That's not the concern. The concern is what happens from here forward. And Dr. Tuber mentioned the same thing. What happens from here forward? That's our big concern.
Any other questions for Bill?
Then, I think that's a very legitimate concern. And as I said, I don't, I'm speaking for myself. That would, I, I'm just trying to fix a problem. I'm not trying to sit there and set a precedence on, you know, allowing other conditional use permits.
Well, you know, I think this was mentioned earlier, too. My personal opinion, I wish Tina would get rid of a few stoves, and then it wouldn't be a multifamily home anymore, right? So, but, you know, my opinion.
I have a couple, Bill. One, when you said shut-offs, do you mean normal curb stops?
Curb stops, yes.
And how many is there at this particular residence? Is there one? Is there two?
I think there's just one. Is there one?
You say they use a year. It looks like about 273.
There's at least one, minimum.
I mean, I help mark them, but I don't, you know, I can't ask, there's not more than two, I don't think.
Okay.
Maybe Dr. Tuber would.
What I'm trying to do is agree with you that 40 years ago versus now, we need more details now than we used to 40 years ago. And whether there's one or two curb stops does make a difference to me and my thoughts on this. Storage-wise, I picked up that you have one 15,000 gallon storage?
Actually, we have three concrete tanks. Each are 5,000 gallons.
Each are five?
Each are five, and they're all in the same location.
Oh, they're all in the same location?
They're elevated. They're elevated above the neighborhood. Now, there are some neighbors on Big Horn Road, which is a gravel road that goes off of Pioneer Circle.
Okay.
There are some up there that their water is pumped into a large cistern, and then they get water out of that. And that was built many years ago by McVickers that used to live up at the top of Big Horn Hill.
So they're all piped together, then? In other words, they operate uniformly?
Well, it goes from our storage tanks, it would go into that large cistern, and then it would go to those homes that feed off of that particular cistern.
Do you have a water manager that takes care of your filing, your federal filings and that sort of thing?
We do.
And who would that be?
That's Piedmont Construction.
Piedmont?
Piedmont Construction, yes. And they have been our water maintenance firm for many years. Bob Paulus was the original founder and owner.
Sure. Bob does a lot of that work.
And his son, Brandon, manages it now.
Okay. And they would probably know whether there's one or two curb stops there. That's where I was headed.
They would, they would know precisely where they are, because I and a few others marked them all. So there are signs there. But the reality is, is that there's a new home that is built on a lot at the end of our neighborhood. That lot was previously designated as eligible for water. The family didn't live there. They lived in, in countryside. But now they've built a home there. They paid the hookup fee. The hookup fee, even if you're eligible for water, is $10,000. And then hooking onto the main and going to the residence is all the responsibility of the owner, and they have to follow our guidelines in terms of materials and so on that are used. So that's been done, and that's been marked. But when we were setting up to get all that done, I tried to turn off a valve that wouldn't turn off, because they hadn't turned off in a long, long time.
That's not uncommon.
So.
Was that valve a curb stop or one of the inline, two, probably a two-inch valve?
It was off the main onto a smaller water line that serves a couple of the residences.
Understood.
So, anyway, we got that all fixed and.
Okay. Then my last question is, in introducing yourself, you said you were speaking kind of for the water company and its memberships, but not to, that there was anything in writing. Am I safe to assume that when you say speaking for them, they opposed any expansion at this point?
Well, you know, again, this is, this is my opinion. Neighbors that I have visited with, I don't say this because I'm a member of the board.
No, you say it because you were there 40 years.
Right, exactly, exactly. So do I believe that the board as a whole, you know, maybe not every member, Tina is the current chair of the board, maybe not every member would vote in favor of something, but my belief is that most would.
All right.
There's another board member in the room as well.
This represents an expansion, even though it's an existing one, it would be finally put down to detail, like you said, that didn't exist 40 years ago.
Right, right. And I get that that's the way of the world.
That's why I'm trying to understand what presentation it was.
Yeah, and my concern, again, my concern isn't about what happens specifically at Tina Roberts' place. My concern is what might happen beyond that.
Well, I don't want to belittle your 40 years on that. Each member up here's probably served a lot on small, ad hoc volunteer committees, and, and they're necessary, and they do involve a lot of work sometimes. There's very few sleeping at the posts when they get on those things. So I appreciate what you're saying.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else for Mr. Coulson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience that wants to speak on this? Certainly, would you please come up and introduce yourself for the record, and then go ahead?
I will. Good morning. My name is Vern Osterloh. I'm a member of the water board just across the canyon in Copper Oaks. And our board is really formed to protect the interest of our residents at Copper Oaks, both with the water and also what's happening adjoining property. Copper Oaks is a dead-end neighborhood coming off of Highway 16, just past the fire station up there. We're pretty much adjacent to bear country. We've got over 100 residents with Quartz Canyon and the Copper Oaks with one egress to Mount Rushmore Road. If we have a fire over there, we have to go through this access road going down and get out Clarkson thing. And being a part of, or a member of this board, my son, Tim Osterloh, and I, we go on that egress thing to clear it out, to make sure there's access. And if we have a fire, it is going to be just quite an operation just to get people out of our area, much less if they have a fire on Clarkson Road, for them to get out to us is going to be a major thing, too. So that's why, right away, we saw this multifamily designation. It just raises red flags all over the place. So I just want to bring that back to you about the public safety. Another thing is, is this precedence, you know, multifamily, the first thing you know is, they've got a lot of property down there. There's buildable property. And if you start doing a precedence of multifamily, what's going to say that you guys are all gone, and in three years, they get voted to do another multifamily, and then we've got more problems of trying to get in and out and just, yeah. I can't understand why you are trying to solve a problem for somebody to change the designation because of a description with the state, multifamily. Why can't that particular owner make her property fit into the, the single family, and then we go on with life? Why do you want to have a designation of a use, or a conditional use permit for multifamily down here, opening it up? It's, it's single family. It was built a single family. Dr. Tuber said it was built for a single family. And if she builds it or changes the residence to conform to single family, then we're off like everything was. And you keep talking about water usage and stuff like that. If it's single family, it'll fit right into the designation of what the, the original. of what the, uh, the original designers of the, the properties down there were looking for. So I, I really have a problem with this conditional use for multifamily. Let's not even talk multifamily, and let's have the owner do what she has to do to get it to single family designation, and then we don't have to look at all these problems, both now and future. That's, thank you very much for your time.
Just a second, Vern. Any questions for Vern? Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on this? Tina, I said that you would certainly have the opportunity to speak again before.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I just wanted to answer a couple of questions. It seemed open-ended.
Sure.
Um, number one was intended use. And this property built nineteen twenty-nine after, um, a couple of old buddies here in Rapid City played a lot of poker and probably drank a lot of whiskey. Um, it was a dude ranch, and I actually have the original brochures, the bedrooms that were all in my house. Uh, not the ones that are, were, that Mr. Tuber built, uh, but the ones that were in my house. It used to be four or five bedrooms. There was, you'd stay for a dollar twenty-five a night for anyone who's looking for some accommodation that far down on the road, writes Morse's. Um, I wanted to bring that up. The second thing I wanted to bring up was, um, there was no deposition that I wrote that I was an LLC. I was never deposed. Um, but I was the, I am the LLC member manager of Cal SD. When Chris Welsh died, I, um, received his estate in full. And as part of that, as the majority member and also as the manager, I can, I didn't sign any real estate documents. I haven't signed any real estate documents, and the property hasn't changed hands because it's owned by the LLC. The member has changed, uh, because of the death. So all of that's been documented, completely documented by the state. Um, and the, um, Mr. Osterloh, I probably apologize if I said that wrong. Like, it's a mouthful. Um, that road is actually maintained by me. Uh, it's on my property, and we try to keep it clear. And Mr. Tuber also, Dr. Tuber also shares that responsibility with me. Apologies, but if you've been clearing it, you, um, have clearly trespassed on my property, but thank you for clearing it if you did. Uh, let me know because I got to tell the Nature Conservancy what you did. Um, and, um, lastly, I did want to bring in that we do have restrictive covenants, and I brought copies for everyone in, on your team um, of the commission, uh, that doesn't allow any more building on the property that you're looking at. There's actually no build, and that is on the deed. Um, so there won't be any additional buildings on the property. Just what's there and what's been there for twenty-five, thirty years. Any questions for me?
Any additional questions for Tina?
I do. You say you have a caretaker on the residence. Are they living in the second part?
They're living in the non-conforming bedrooms.
What's that?
They're living in a non-conforming bedroom.
In?
And I would ask them to move.
To a conforming bedroom?
To a conforming bedroom. It's pretty simple.
Are they utilizing the space above the, the garage?
No, no one is. That's what I use for my family because it's closest to me.
And you want to leave it as a operable kitchen space so that they can cook outside of your, your main residence if they're staying there? Or allow them to have that opportunity?
Uh, I haven't had anyone ever cook in that. I just would prefer not to spend architectural and construction fees to deconstruct part of my house. If they cook there, I guess they cook there. There's a coffee maker. But I don't, we have a, I have a very nice, beautiful kitchen that we spend a lot of time in. I did, I'm sorry, I apologize. I did turn on that stove for Thanksgiving because it didn't all fit my stove downstairs.
So, um, in the multifamily designation, this is probably a question for the planning department. Um, what would it take to remove from that, um, three-bedroom space above the garage to make it a non-livable space?
Would ask Ms. Roberts to remove the kitchen?
In its entirety or just the appliances?
Uh, well, that would pretty much be the entirety. I mean, if you take out the appliances, all that would be left there is a cupboard and a counter.
My understanding is what you're saying is if you remove the, the stove and the sink, what, what are we considering utilities?
A stove in the sink would be the, the two utilities that we would be mostly concerned with. Uh, we have typically allowed kitchenette situations with a refrigerator and a microwave.
Just an option to think about. It wouldn't be a lot of, uh, construction cost to remove a sink in a range.
My understanding, Jason, that's not the only thing that would have to be removed. There's other parts of the home that also have to be deconstructed.
I think that would be it for that loft area above the garage. And then the pool area is not considered a residence at this point because it doesn't have bedrooms. So that kitchen could stay.
So that kitchen could stay because it's a bar.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if we went that route, would we then be back to the single-family residence and wouldn't need the conditional use permit?
Would? Just stay.
I'll just stay.
Just stay.
Yes, sir.
Does every structure that has a kitchenette in it, um, whether it's just, let's say, a ranch that's got a mother-in-law quarter in the bottom of it, that should be in a multifamily designation?
If it has a stove.
If it has a stove and a kitchen.
Running water.
So how many hundreds of those do we have out there that exist that are a mother-in-law quarters?
That's a good question. Uh, we capture a lot of those through the accessory.
This is not the only one.
I bet my neighbors have the same thing.
Yes.
Through the accessory dwelling units, uh, we've added that to our ordinance.
Right, that's a little bit different though. This is still all in one structure right here.
Yeah, as it sits now, it wouldn't meet the definition of a multiple-family dwelling. That's why we're here now.
Is, is there some other questions?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Do we know what the road width is of Clarkson Road?
Uh, Clarkson? I, I would have to.
It's a two-lane road with.
Pull that up.
It's built to section fourteen standards, is my question. Is it a twenty-four-foot road? Is it? Excuse me, sir. You'll have to come back to the diocese and answer the question.
Sorry. You need to reintroduce yourself just for the record.
This is Bill Coulson again. I, I just want to say that Clarkson Road is built to county standards. It was just reasphalted within the last year or so. So I, I have every confidence. I mean, that's not my profession, but I'm sure it's to county standard. It's striped and everything, and signs and all of that are all county signs.
I'm going to put an asterisk at the time it was built because some of those requirements have changed, Kevin. Thank you.
It appears to be sixty-six foot wide right of way, but again, this is within the platting jurisdiction of Rapid City. So this would be subject to their subdivision regulations and their road improvement standards, uh, which it all met in twenty fifteen when it was platted most recently.
Okay, thank you. And then do we know the current amount of homes that are off Clarkson? How many are feeding on that?
We went through a, a variance for, uh, the previous owner to allow, uh, him to subdivide a lot, um, last year. Uh, I don't recall the number off the top of my head, but I want to say that it was close to eighty, possibly more.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. So Tina, we.
You done? No, not. Um, within the literature, it says that, uh, your current home was previously used as rental space. So was there actually landlord, um, type use of that property prior to your ownership? There was, um, some of your, the, the space above the garage and other rooms, you said, were rented? When you went to look at it, there were tenants in there?
There were tenants in those non-conforming bedrooms when we viewed the house. I didn't see any evidence of anyone above the garage, but there was tenants in that non-conforming. And the, um, Tom Routh, the real estate agent for, I believe he's Remax, and, um, Dr. Tuber, uh, emailed my, um, I call him my husband, Will, for the record, call him my partner, um, that they were receiving, I believe, fourteen hundred dollars in rent for that pool house.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and then I understand that the house is approved for a seven-bedroom septic system. Is that correct? And we can have two people per bedroom, so fourteen people basically using a single-family residence, all utilizing water. Um, seems like two people living in a house is, and some family visiting from time to time does not have a whole lot of water load on there as compared to what could be there in a, you know, single-family residence with all of those bedrooms full.
Is your question, Kevin, uh, for Jason and the septic, what it's?
Hey, I'm just, yeah, confirming that. It's a, it's more of a statement.
So what I verified on my site visit is that there are five bedrooms in the house. The septic system is sized for seven. And then some to account for garbage disposal.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason. You have additional questions, Kevin?
I think that does it for me, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ron.
Tina, did I understand?
Got Kevin at the other end first.
Oh. All right. Did I understand that, uh, you said that the plan is just to have it for family and it's not a commercial venture at all? And if, is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. There are no locking doors. It is in my house.
If there was a condition put in there, um, that just said, you know, this, you know, just like any CUP, um, that there's a condition that says this cannot be used for personal or for commercial purposes, would that be a problem with you?
Nope.
I think that solves most of our issues here.
Ron?
Well, that was my question. If we added a, a condition saying that this could not be used for profit.
That's great.
I think that, uh, you know, says it all right there.
Happy to comply. I'm just here to correct so that we have everything on the record, correct what I purchased, and also, you know, conform to what's necessary and then comply. My greatest desire. Jason, I just want to get us all out of trouble.
Additional questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
A long time ago, I ran into a situation where we lived, uh, over in Montana. Okay, not-for-profit. These people had a place and they got very churchy, and they started having religious groups come through, a lot of them.
I could only be so lucky.
I, I'm just saying, there's, there's got to be some protection there too. This not-for-profit's one thing, but the actual number of people, how often, I mean, I don't know how you do it. I really don't.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Karen?
I guess I'm not comfortable telling people how they live in their property. Like, you know, this is, I think, getting out of hand. She's trying to bring her property into compliance, and we're hearing all this, people saying, we don't want you to bring it in compliance because it's going to open the door for others. That, I agree that I wouldn't want this to happen in other properties down the road. This is just to bring the property into compliance.
Anything else, Karen?
No.
I just have one question. Any other owner members of the LLC?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Larry Tuber, may I comment?
Not right now. You please, I have a question on the floor.
Cal SD LLC is a, is a wholly-owned, single member of another LLC. It is a very complicated, thirty-seven groups of LLCs in my life. So I don't think that has anything to probably do with this issue, but.
That does concern me. I have a lot of concern about doing business as names and who we're dealing with. We do this again and again. We make these decisions, and we have a lot of other people we're reporting them to. We have no idea who they are or what their horse in the game is.
Let me be clear. I am the managing member and LLC manager of every LLC I'm a member of.
We don't know who, I did, my question was, are there other owner members?
There, there are no other members of Cal SD LLC. It is a one-single-member LLC.
But I understood there are other LLCs that are involved in the ownership of this.
No, I'm saying there are thirty-seven LLCs in my life. I apologize. I, I commented unnecessarily about something off.
Okay. Mr. Tuber, go ahead and ask your question, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, Larry Tuber, uh, a couple of, as it relates to Ron's comments on use of water.
Mr. Tuber, can I just throw in one thing? I hope this is the last of your questions. Thank you.
Uh, yes, unless somebody brings up some other points. Um, I put the water lines in, uh, to that cabin, that property, there is one curb stop. Number two is the water supply is not metered. Uh, number three is the, uh, the, the estimates for water use, uh, that provides, uh, national numbers of one hundred gallons per person per day. Uh, so, uh, Ron's numbers are about half. So generally speaking, we're, we're talking, uh, about three to four hundred thousand gallons a year per, uh, for that use if we have multifamily. Now, as it relates to the stoves and multifamily, in our development, and I do believe probably in the county, there are many homes that have more than one stove. They have more than one sink. Uh, no one is objecting to the issue of having more than one stove or more than one sink or more than one refrigerator. Nor are we objecting to the many people in our, in our development and probably the county that have non-conforming use of property as it relates to, uh, someone occupying a walkout basement or, uh, a, a garage loft. What we are hoping to address here specifically is the, the, uh, the, the indication for the, the, the labeling of this property is multifamily for the purpose of allowing rentals for economic benefit with contracts, paying leases, paying utilities. And as Jason informed me, uh, that a CUP allows up to four subunits under the CUP. Uh, so if it is allowed, that this is multifamily, uh, and it's allowed under a grandfathering of the two thousand eight code on the restriction of additional dwellings in a single egress road system. And, uh, it, it's very likely we are going to see, not only in Spring Canyon, but in Copper Oaks as well, other people who have more than one stove in an area of their house to make the same CUP application. So we're not advocating, to summarize, we're not advocating removing stoves or anything like that. In fact, I think the ordinance overreaches in terms of its micromanagement of a person's home. It's the, it's the establishment of multifamily with additional addresses that allow not only the current owner, but future owners of that property and other property owners to use the same avenue, the same theory that staff is using to allow the CUP to proceed. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, I just have one question on your statements because they kind of conflicted. Are you still in opposition to this? Or are you supporting that we allow people to have additional stoves in living areas?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I've, I oppose the CUP as it relates to determination of a multifamily unit. I don't oppose a person having a.
That's not my question. My question, are you continuing to oppose this? And we have an ordinance that defines multifamily dwelling, and we have certain criteria in that.
Yes, sir. I'm a pro.
Okay, that, and I just want a simple, concise answer. We're running this out. And I, as I would understand it, then what you're telling me is you haven't changed. You do oppose it.
Yes, sir, I oppose it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tina? Thank you, Tina.
Thank you for your work.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this matter before we have a little discussion? It's eleven o'clock. We're going to take a ten-minute break. That'll be till twenty after.
After we vote?
What? No, before we put it on. You want to vote now? Before? I'll go with what the commissioner wants. I was going to give you a chance to scratch your head. I'm still scratching mine. I'd rather see the thing continue than I get some more information than I would vote on the thing.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, I, actually, I think we need, uh, to continue this. I just, uh, I got too much information, fourteen pages of documents last night. Uh, I've met with planning zoning the day. We went over it. Uh, I still, I'm very cloudy. Uh, I'm really, I don't want to see, there's just a lot of things I think we need to take a breath and give it a couple of weeks or whatever. So I'm going to make a motion that we continue this item until the next, uh, planning meeting when, what date's at.
Chair would like a second of that so that we can go to the discussion.
Second that.
Thank you.
It's February twenty-seventh.
So that would be.
You're going with the twenty-seventh?
I think by then, we should be able to get things aired out, look at compromises, whatever.
I guess for the staff, I'd rather see it two meetings, give it thirty days.
That, that's fine.
Uh, and that gives them an opportunity to reply to us and reply to the applicants and the other people that are, are certainly on, watching our work. Uh, I'd rather see two weeks in, in my. Uh, I'd rather see two weeks in, in my, or two meetings in my...
I'll amend that motion to two meetings, Mr. Chair.
That's March thirteenth.
Is the second in agreement to that?
March thirteenth.
Zero, three, one, three. Two, three. Discussion on that.
I think I'll oppose that.
The audience.
Mr. Chair. Um, I believe that we've heard enough stuff today that I'm ready to vote on it.
I agree.
Ready to vote.
Okay. Anybody from the audience like to weigh in on what we're talking about? We're talking, we have a motion on the floor to continue it to March thirteenth, twenty-three. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like it's tied. That automatically puts it to the next meeting?
No.
Correct? Oh, it fails? The motion fails? Okay. Oh, all right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Megan, you probably should tell me across the mic, just chastise me across the mic, will you?
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office, so it fails because one member is gone. So his vote is presumed no. Um, and there was only three for yes.
We didn't have four to act.
So we need another motion to...
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'll move. I move that we approve conditional use twenty-three dash zero one with, with the addition of a condition that this is not to be used for commercial rental air and B properties. It's a family-owned operation for their enjoyment.
Second.
Moved in second to approve with one additional condition, and that would be that something that's stated properly cannot be used for commercial purposes.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I add that, you know, with emphasis on family members?
I didn't catch it, Ron?
Well, you know, like Mike said, you could have other entities. But if you say you want that to be for family members, I think then that just eliminates the, the commercial part of it.
I wouldn't want that part away.
Mr. Chair, just, just to clarify your statement, Commissioner Rosskine, would that mean that the current caretaker that's there would have to remove or not utilize that?
You know, I think a property that big probably needs a caretaker. That's just my opinion.
Because as it stands now, the caretaker currently resides in the poolhouse area. So according to Ms. Roberts, she's going to make him move to the loft area above the garage. So at that point, that would, that would be an income property for her above the garage if she charges him rent to live there. So that would occupy that second structure.
Well, that's the reason I thought we could continue this because there's some stuff that I think that we need to discuss more.
I'm going to weigh in, Jason, and you can scold me whatever you want. This is on our docket right here because it wasn't handled well in the past, like Mr. Colson referred to. Forty years ago isn't today. And what we look at today in a way of detail and propriety of what the, the, we do from this commission, and we are missing a member, so we can tie. This, I think we need to be specific about where we go in the future. And that's why I wanted it continued. I think we need to be specific. I think there's a way to solve the problem and get it going for the applicant. But we're also going back and cleaning up part of her deal with the previous owner by doing that. There's questions there. No question in my mind, there's questions there. I'm not, I didn't, you know, just crawl out from underneath a mushroom and say, "Here, this is my first real estate deal." There's things that should have been looked into way back then, and we end up in that position a lot. There's covenants on the property. We don't look at covenant. So I think some detail needs to be added to this before it's voted on, but that's my opinion. And the garage and the caretakers, just an example, that's just one. There's several others.
Mr. Chair, that's typical in any kind of a duplex or two that they have, whether it's a mother-in-law or whether it's a caretaker. They many times charge rent for that additional person. This property was set up as a single-family residence. It had some additions putting on to it. And I believe the intent of the, the owner is, it's their property that they're going to use for family and friends. We all have friends that come over sometimes, but that does not change the, make it a commercial enterprise. And that's what we're looking at right here.
Mr. Colson, you can may come back up here. You have to introduce yourself again. This will be about a poor time, but we'll happy to hear you.
Bill Colson, again, I just want to clarify when Dr. Tuber, and correct me, Larry, if I'm wrong about this, but when, and when Tina was talking about covenants, when they're talking about covenants, they're talking about covenants for this specific piece of property. The covenants for the neighborhood that were created back in the nineteen sixties, one of them was that you must build a home with cedar shakes as shingles. It didn't take long to realize that in a fire-rich area like we live, that's a stupid covenant. So that covenant was abandoned and nothing was done to, to modify the covenants moving forward, which in effect just eliminates the covenants for the neighborhood. So we have rules that are established by the bylaws of the water company about water distribution, but there are really no effective covenants for our entire neighborhood.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Chair, you know, one of the, I'm right on that fence. I could go either way, and that's why I'd like to continue it, just to get a little more information, a comfort level, to figure out which way I want to go. And we have to keep in mind that commission, commissions change and administrations change. And as was mentioned earlier, what happens in fifteen years, twenty years, and they, and people don't remember what went on at this meeting, it's going to be, what's going to, what, they're going to fall back on whatever's documented, and I just really think we need to make sure that we do it right the first time.
Anyone else want to chive in?
Mr. Chair, at this point, when I first said about the analysis, about the confusion, I still have plenty of confusion on this. I would like to have a little extra time, have the staff work on it before we go forward.
We are, and Megan just so aptly pointed out to me, we are in a bit of a quagmire as to what we do. We can't take a recess. We can't do, we've got to decide this even though we're coming to... If we did decide to continue it now, it would be a motion that'd have to be made by one of the three of us that voted for it. It can only be reconsidered in that basis. That could be done, or we can vote on this motion, and if we fail again, we certainly continue to, to proceed until it's solved. I want you to...
There is a motion and second on the floor.
There's a motion and second on the floor. But somebody could ask for reconsideration to bring up the old motion. That is an acceptable way to solve it.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would that be a substitute motion or an amendment?
Well, in this case, we've already voted down the one. It has to be, you voted for continuance, I did, and I think Mike did. Isn't that what the record shows? One of the three of us has to propose to reconsider.
Yeah, it'd be Johnson, Lewis, or Rosskine.
So I would propose to reconsider for continuance to the...
Of the original motion.
Original motion.
We have a motion on the floor, though.
But we can vote on this and then vote on the other.
So my suggestion would just be to make a substitute motion to reconsider the first motion.
A little quicker?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, Ron, you are correct. We're going to do it quicker that way.
Okay.
You're proposing a substitute motion.
I would second his motion, the substitute.
Right.
It's open for discussion. They're proposing a substitute motion in place of yours. Now, this does take two-thirds of us, does it? I'm pretty sure it's more than the majority. We're liable to get stuck again. Chair, call right there.
Can we have discussion now?
Sure. It's open for discussion.
So I don't have a problem extending this so that you guys feel more comfortable with your vote. I'm, I'm comfortable with where I stand. The hurdles that I see are a non-conforming bedroom and for-profit use. As Kevin stated, I would be okay passing that at this point today. But I'm happy to extend so that you guys can get comfortable with your opinions.
And I'll weigh in on this. I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with you folks that have decided on this. What I'm uncomfortable about is the details that fill this in. In other words, the wording of those things we add. The opportunity that what we had, the, the planning departments had a chance to look at, and Megan's had a chance to look at, and we didn't sell out the whole farm, you know? I think this needs to get straightened out by detail, and it needs to be recorded, and then it's done.
A good point, Mr. Chair.
And we can go forward.
And I agree with that, Mr. Chair, but I believe that the planning commission or the planning department can come up with the right wording for what we're proposing.
The only reason I said that is because there was some question in Megan's mind about whether, what we can do about the single family. Go ahead.
Okay. So let me just preface this by, this is coming directly from Roberts' rules. So a motion to reconsider can only be made by a member of the prevailing side. So it would have to be made by somebody that did not want to continue it. And then it's a simple majority. So actually, Mr. Rosskine, you would not be able to make that motion because you were in the failing side.
You're saying a tie, the prevailing side would be that we can't? Okay.
Correct.
I misread that.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
So if one of you wanted to make that motion, it would be up to you. But if you don't want to make that motion, then I would suggest making that...
Then we're back to a motion on the floor. Motion on the floor is to pass it with the reservation that it not be used for commercial purposes. Is that not correct?
Exactly. And I believe that the planning department can put something together.
You'll have to come up with that wording. It'll be an additional condition under what you're proposing.
Exactly. Yes.
I, I would propose to amend that to also remove the non-conforming bedrooms from bedrooms, to remove the beds or doors from those non-conforming bedrooms. I would add that as a condition to that motion.
I would accept that.
And you seconded it in the first place?
Karen did.
Karen, is that acceptable to you, what they just... You're the one that's the catchpin here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I still got a problem with the caretaker. I think we need to dot the i's and cross the t's, so I'm going to stick to my guns.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anyone from the floor out in the audience? Tina?
Tina Roberts. Uh, I believe if the caretaker doesn't have to pay rent, then it stays within the motion that you've proposed with the additions.
Could you repeat that? I don't think we...
I believe if the caretaker is not paying rent, then it stays, then it conforms to the proposition that you've made, which is, some would call it non-commercial, but it's actually not, uh, what, what nonprofit.
Can I ask a question? They're within the city jurisdiction, aren't they?
Oh.
Plating jurisdiction.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. The city uses a family member as the basis, and we don't, do we?
Their, their definitions are only applicable insofar as it deals with plating. So this has nothing to do with plating. So Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office, again, I just would like to say that if you had the condition, have it be that it cannot be rented for profit, that would cover both the caretaker, it would cover future renting by somebody who owns this property twenty years from now. That would cover anybody that wanted to rent for money. And, and if she's not charging rent, then the caretaker could live there.
And then my last question, will this CUP go on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they would have to, if she sold the property and they wanted to have that CUP transferred, they would have to go through the correct process in order to have that done. There are certain provisions that make it so that way CUPs end if you do not go through that process. But there is a very specific setup process for how that works.
Thank you.
Later on.
Any other questions for Megan before we let her sit down again? Okay.
I think I'd like to hear one more time the...
Full motion.
The conditions.
Okay. Jerry, you think you got them all? Kevin's sitting right there. He'll fill you in.
You tell me what I said.
Okay. Moved by Keane and seconded by McGregor to approve a conditional use permit twenty-three oh one and to include a condition that the property cannot be used commercially as an Airbnb or a vacation home rental, and the property can only be used for family members and to include language that the applicant removed the non-conforming bedrooms.
I believe I added...
So I don't think that that was the language that I heard. What I heard, this is what I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but what I heard that you want is you don't want people to be able to rent it for profit.
Yes.
Correct? So Jerry, I would suggest that you change several of your conditions to say that it not be rented for profit, leave out the stuff about the family. And I didn't hear the stuff about the vacation home rental. I might have been in the back, but if that is what was in there, then I would include that. Was that not in there? So take out all the stuff about vacation home rentals that was never part of the motion and then include the stuff about the bedrooms being made so...
Is that all non-conforming things, Megan? Or what I'm saying, we talked about the stove, we're going to leave that, correct? Under what you're proposing?
Exactly.
I guess. That's what I'm trying to pin it down to, those details that I think are necessary. We've got to let this applicant know what we're doing, so...
So my understanding of your motion is it's two things. You can't rent it for profit, number one, and number two, you have to make those bedrooms not sleepable. And that's, those are the additions, in addition to any other conditions that are in the current packet. So is that correct?
First staff recommendation, right?
Yes. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's what the motion is.
And what that allows then is those rooms can be used, but when you said not in a bedroom condition, there's not a bed in there, but you could use it for an office, you could use it for whatever else.
Correct.
You don't have to remove that wall.
Craft or whatever. Yeah.
And then just for the record, Megan did it, but both the person that made the motion and the second of the motion are in agreement that that is in fact what their intent
Yes.
was for that motion. Thank you. Any other discussion before we go on?
Mr. Chair.
Just second.
Would there be a review process on this?
One year.
One year?
In the condition.
I think that's what it...
The last nation.
One year. Right now is in, yes. Greg, you have to reintroduce yourself? I know I keep saying that, but it's for our people out there.
Thank you, Chair. Greg Skrowman on behalf of Spring Canyon Management, Dr. Tuber. I guess one of my questions was just answered, there will be a use on review in a year. I, I questioned the, using the word for-profit, or if it could be for consideration, because I think that enforcement capabilities, when you talk about profit and, "Am I making any money on this?" or, "Are they paying utilities?" or whatever. I mean, I think the intent is to not have multiple family units there. And, and I would just like to point out that about a year ago, we were here in this room, and Ms. Roberts was talking about vacation home rentals, and that was her intent at that time. If she says her intent is different now, I can't change that. But I do know what I heard in this room a year ago about what her intent was because she was objecting to an application that Dr. Tuber was making for vacation home rental. And she said, "Well, there's too many out there," but she already had that going on at her place. So I just wanted to raise that for the commission. That's why I think there's additional information that we could provide to clarify this, and that's why I think that continuance would be a, a good idea. But that's, you've, you've already explored that in depth, and I appreciate the commission's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. He beat me to discussion. I was going to put compensation, or he used the word consideration. Profit means just that. Somebody could say they're not making a profit at it. And that is a good point to switch perhaps the wording just a little bit. Compensation, I think, and I think your word consideration is more legally accepted. In other words, if somebody pays them a dollar, that's certainly not going to produce profit, but still maybe sign a document that says they can use it. You're still, you know... You're still, you know, putting it down the market. Go ahead.
I think Megan's comment on not being rented means it takes away anything for profit. If you're not renting any property, you're not making any money on it. It's just somebody staying there.
Maybe I missed that in your review.
You're not renting it, you're not creating any income.
Yeah, Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So I, I get where Mr. Schromann is coming from with the wording consideration, but consideration can be a lot of different things. I mean, you're taking me back to first year of law school. I mean, consideration could be three pigs and a cow. So I don't know if that's really where this board wants us to get involved in. But it's up to you guys. I, I use the language specifically for profit because that's something easily definable. Consideration is a lot more murky legally.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we continue this for 30 days.
Okay, you're pulling your second.
I'll second that motion.
All right, there's a motion to continue it for 30 days and a second to that. Right now, it's open for discussion.
I just, we have too many questions. Let's get that. Condition number nine written into this or legal language put together for it and move forward.
Mr. Chair, I think we could, I can go along with 30 days, but I think we could easily decide it in two weeks, too. This probably doesn't, you know, it's not gonna be used, it's not gonna change anything right now. Again, it's just trying to bring this into compliance to the definition basically of it. It's not like it's a for-profit business that is trying to hurry up and get the doors open for it. So I'd rather say two weeks, but I can go along with a month.
And I suggested the 30 days because I know the vacation home rental ordinance is gonna be going through the mill and you guys are gonna be doing some, burning some oil on that, trying to get it through our Planning Commission and there will be some additional meetings. I don't think one meeting is gonna solve it all. But that was why I threw 30. So I just wanted you to know, I don't disagree with your two weeks if we got right on it.
Mr. Chair, staff can support two weeks. I would actually prefer it. I have appointments, I'm not gonna be able to make that one in March. So if we can do this at the end of this month, that way I can be a part of it since I originally drafted this staff report.
Would that work with your original motion?
Yes, two weeks is fine.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think Ron seconded.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Any other additions? Go ahead, Mr. Ross, you're certainly eligible to weigh in here.
I just wanna have it on the record, I have the original notice for this. It says, the reason for the request is to allow multifamily dwelling in accordance with Sections 205, 319, and 510, 319 as a vacation home rental. So if that clears anything up, that's in my, what I received in the mail and my certified.
Okay.
If you would like this document also.
We're all right on that.
That cleared anything up? Thank you.
Dana?
Apologies, Jason, just to be clear, I just mailed what they gave me.
Okay.
So I apologize that I didn't read it and proofread it, but that is not the intent. Vacation home rentals, I have one in my front yard. I don't need anymore. Thanks.
Jason, you wanna comment before we ask one more time for a discussion and then a vote? Is that more of a cookie cutter type of thing that they send out?
Uh, well.
Is it pre-designed for each thing or?
It is, we, Jerry puts those together for the applicants. They come back, come by and pick them up. They need to be mailed out 10 days prior to the hearing date, so it's typical.
Thank you. Any other additional questions for Jason? Discussion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for all of you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion for recess?
Yes. Uh, let's recess until court, uh, let's come back in 10 minutes. Will, will that be acceptable? We'll move this right along. Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna call the meeting back to order. I see all the commissioners are back at their chairs. Go ahead, Cody.
Cody Stag, Environmental Planner. Number 15 is Major Planning and Development Overlay Amendment PU 23-02. It's to amend an existing planning and development overlay to allow a single-family residence to be used as a music school and a bed and breakfast and to include accessory structures. The applicant and landowner are Katie Smirnova and Brett Wallfish. Location of the property is 13271 Condeck Road. Involve 17.04 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing residential residential. Access is off Condeck Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the zoning ordinance Section 216 lists the following standards and requirements that shall apply in a PUD overlay district. The answers are on the screen, I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the use of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or a conditional use permit in an agriculture district. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are the type and are located to minimize detrimental influence on surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay districts meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking of an agriculture district. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district involves 15 acres. Number five, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is owned by the applicants and managers Brett Wallfish and Katie Smirnova. Number six, yes, Condeck Road is an average 12-foot wide road that is not within the road district or maintained by county highway. However, the applicants have submitted plans and have started road improvements to widen the road to 18 feet wide. And number seven is on the next chart. Again, the answers are on the screen, I'll read them aloud. Number one, no, the use of the proposed PUD overlay district could be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. There is concern from emergency service, excuse me, sorry. Emergency services and staff about the location of the property on a minimally improved road. However, the applicants have begun road improvements to widen the road to 18 feet. Number two, yes, the uses of proposed PUD overlay districts should not substantially impair or diminish the uses values of enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. The events take place inside within structures, so there should be, there should not be a nuisance to surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for use permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district contains adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary site improvements. Number five, yes, access to the subject property is through a 66-foot wide access easement. Condeck Road is not maintained by a road district or county highway. The road width is on average nine to 12 feet wide. However, the applicants have, have begun road improvements to widen the road to 18 feet wide. Number six, yes, the requested uses conform to all regulations of an agriculture district within approved PUD overlay. And number seven, yes, future land uses identified as agriculture, large lot residential and natural areas consistent within this district. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence, a 12-by-20 shed with a porch and a 12-by-24 shed, and then there's two sheds under 144 square feet sitting on cinder blocks. There's an onsite wastewater treatment system and an approved stormwater permit. This was right around for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. However, there was a comment from the Forest Service about signs being posted illegally on Forest Service land. I'm not sure if that's anything to do with what the applicants are requesting though. The applicants are requesting to amend their PUD overlay to allow music camp concerts and bed and breakfasts. The amendment will affect the following conditions of approval. Condition number two currently states that there be no more than four practice cabins. The requested change would allow for 10 practice cabins. Condition three currently states that there be no more than one music camp per calendar year, not to exceed 30 people, including the residents. The request is to change to allow two camps, not to exceed the 30 people, one in the summer and one in the winter. And condition four, that there be no more than one performance showcase event per year, with the attendance limited to 50 individuals for the Rushmore Music Festival Board of Directors. The requested change would allow for two fundraisers up to 100 people and eight weekend recitals up to 50 people. The applicant indicated that the eight weekend recitals would occur during the music camp and the fundraisers would occur at other times during the year. And condition five, that the number of guests to a bed and breakfast not exceed six guests from a single-family. The requested change would allow for 20 overnight guests from no more than three separate groups. And again, the applicants are in the process of widening the road to 18 feet. Road improvement should be completed within a few weeks depending on weather. So with that, staff is recommending approval of planning and development overlay amendment PU 23-02 with conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody? Can your applicants hear it?
Yes, they are.
All right, and then, Cody, I get, and I just have to ask this. How many, since this whole process started on the music camp, how many review meetings and by development review meetings? And I know we're looking at the future of that sort of stuff, but how many are in advance of? I see that you reviewed the roadwork and I read that, but like for instance, that had that come forward in a review meeting of some type from the time we've started this project, which is not that far down the road, what, we're a year and a half down the road, baby?
So you're, are you referring to when did the road?
With you and the applicant, have you gone through processes before we get to these situations?
About them amending.
Review process.
Amending this. So the last review that was done was in August of 2022, so about six months ago.
That was after it had come back from commissioners?
Correct, yes. So in that, from that time from August to the beginning of January, we hadn't really heard from the applicants.
Okay.
Their next review was, you know, was scheduled for today in February from the six months ago. But other than that, the PUD as itself was approved with the conditions of if they wanted to expand or anything that they had to widen the road. Well, over the past six months, they've been working with their engineers on getting those road plans done. Then they came in and met with us on the amendment portion and applied for their stormwater permit to improve the road.
So the review I read was based upon, what would you call it, citizen inquiry? That the way you put it?
For, for the, like for the road improvements.
For the road, yes.
For the road improvements, it was yes, if they, so the county, and I've, I've tried explaining this to some other neighbors who have called and requested this. This road is a private road. The county cannot require them to go improve the road and we, and we didn't. There's not one condition that says you have to improve the road to 18 feet. It was if you want this additional uses, this is what it would require. And so they, they initiated the widening of the road to 18 feet.
Thank you. That's the way I understood it from the initial time, because what this is the, today's one on the, earlier in the schedule would have been the third time, it's before the Planning Commission.
Correct, there's been.
Okay. And this is a new request?
Correct, this is a new request. The older requests had five or six total meetings between the Planning Commission and the board.
Okay. Now I have a better feel on it. Thank you. Any other questions for Cody?
I have a question. Under condition, the performance showcases, it says we, the attendance was limited to 50 individuals and now it's up to 100. Is there adequate parking for say 30, 40 vehicles?
They have, they have 17 acres of land and on their original request, they showed adequate parking for. So what they're doing is, the, the easiest way to describe it is when they originally came in for their PUD, what you originally heard on April 25th. Over that timeframe from April 25th to when it was approved in the middle of June, there was a lot of concessions made by the applicant and some agreements with the board on how to dwindle that number down to kind of get them going on what they, for that year. And basically told them, improve the road to 18 feet and then you will consider your additional uses. So they're just requesting virtually what they were originally in here requesting last April.
Say that again, Cody.
So.
Just briefly, just when you were saying this reflects what you reviewed way back in April?
Correct, so when they, when they initially came in, what, what the Planning Commission saw on April 25th, this, this request would be virtually the same request as you saw back then. Like for instance, they were requesting concerts up to 100 people. The Board of Commissioners weren't comfortable with that, so they said you can have a showcase event for 50 people if you improve the road and you want more people, then you have to come back and this is what they're coming back for.
All right, and this, and when we say April, this is based upon what the applicant actually wanted to do until they saw the processes and the ordinances that were involved in their review of their development.
Correct, so originally when they applied for it, the Planning Department recommended that it be denied without prejudice because we weren't comfortable with the width of the road. Over those meetings, the, the board was more in favor of granting them certain uses, giving them like a minimal, minimally what they were asking for and telling them that if you want more than that, you need to improve the road.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, the reason you're widening that road, I guess, would be, one of the reasons is probably for safety purposes. You got three commissioners here that drive that road quite often. And my big concern is not Klondike so much, it's turning off Highway 16. I mean, that, I almost wrecked last year because there's a trailer in my lane trying to turn. And so I can tell you firsthand, that's a problem. And the state of South Dakota, I believe, looked at it, Ritz-Sacker, and I think they said they didn't see a problem. Well, there's a problem there, in my opinion. And it's not so much Klondike, but I would say that when you start getting to the number of events and camps and whatnot, I'd like to, you know, I don't know, you're gonna need a turning lane if you're gonna do it safely. I mean, you're talking, me, Charlie and Mike, we drive that when we go home and we see it firsthand, not just there, but other places that turn off Highway 16. So that's one of my concerns.
Correct, and that was, so this request and the previous request was sent to the Department of Transportation and each time they said no comment.
I was gonna ask you the same question. And my concern about that is I still remember the one we looked at here about six months ago in regard to sandwich trucks. And they wanted to build darn near an overpass because they were gonna close Addison and the guy was gonna have to rebuild the whole road to get in and out of there, let alone have. And yet, we're talking about one hill that's blind. I actually went down the thing and this has nothing to do with your, your clients. Literally, a semi decided to use that short interpass in between the two lanes to do a U-turn. A 53-foot truck. And I don't, and again, South Dakotans never speed or we don't blast over the hilltops. But I'm telling you, that was exciting. He had to pull all the way to the right to be able to clear the mist running into Klondike. And he just decided, pull the wooly. That thing happens and people that are going to turn left there when it's coming and you're heading west, it does represent an extreme danger. The other way, yeah, I can understand that you got a little more sight lane that way, but it's still a difficult road to get in on, only because it's going in on an angle. And roads that go in on an angle when people are confused cause serious problems. That's why they want to switch them all to 90 degrees. But I agree with you, Commissioner, but any other questions for Cody?
Just a quick one. Okay, you talked about the commissioners when they got involved, you started lowering your numbers and things. Were there any commitments made that, okay, if you guys make this road 18 feet, we're gonna help you bring these numbers back up or?
I, I can't speak for what the, what the commissioners were referring to when they, when they said that if you want these requests, the road needs to be at 18 feet wide. I can't, I can't make that determination for what, what they were referring to. We always tell the applicants that there's no guarantee that regardless of what you request, that there's ever.
But the fact is, if, if the commissioners among themselves were talking about, okay, so if they get this 18-foot road in, we can probably help them in this thing. I mean.
Mr. Chair, I think the commission took. Mr. Chair, I think the com- commission took the stance, we'll consider it. No guarantee. And I, I think when I voted, uh, I wasn't, uh, in favor of where we're at today. So obviously, you know where the direction I'm going today, but, uh, yeah, there's, there's no guarantees, you know. On just about every neighbor in that neighborhood sends me emails and letters and phone calls. I think they're trying to tell me something. So I just want them to know that I'm listening.
All right. I'd like to limit it to just questions for Cody. Um, and I was going to ask, and you folks are familiar with it, I, that you allow me to have the applicants last. We do have three speaker request forms on this, so that you won't feel uncomfortable. And I am going to ask the applicants whether they, that would be fine with them, that they could speak last. Okay, we have three speaker request forms on this, and I'll get to them. Trudy Brassfield. You just knew you were gonna be first, didn't you, Trudy?
Good morning. I, I don't know what time it is anymore. Uh, my name is Trudy Brassfield, and my husband and I own property on Klondike Road. And we've owned it since nineteen ninety-nine. I am, we are asking for denial of this PUD. Um, I had sent a text to Cody at Commissioners on Wednesday, and I just wanted to have some clarification on the second page. And we, did you all get a second page to this that we were sent out?
No, we don't get a copy of that in our mail out.
On the second page, we got in handwriting, and it's amendments back to the original PUD, and I was wondering who wrote that?
Uh, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, that would have been the applicants. They are not required to type out their amendments. They can handwrite it if they choose.
Okay, thank you. So the second one, um, so on that second page is they want to increase in the number of practice sheds. And they said that that was a concession when they were allowed to have their three-week, uh, music camp. It was actually not a concession because they only had time to put four sheds on. And as stated from your planning and zoning, it doesn't matter how many number of sheds you have on your property as long as they're under a hundred and forty-four square feet. What we need to clarify here is how many of these sheds of ten are gonna be over a hundred and forty-four square feet. And then that is another permit, but evidently that's allowed under PUD is what I understand. So the third thing that I wanted to bring up is on the, um, on the staff report, it's number twenty-seven. It says that the planning director may allow additional development or construction, which is consistent with the existing development on this property. Does that include more A-frames connected by breezeways?
Brittany, you're gonna handle it?
I am. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. When I approve development on a property, I look at the zoning district it's in and the uses by right that's in there. So if it's something that is allowed in that district as a permitted use, um, I would have to allow that development because it is permitted, so.
So there could be.
Um, well, there could, anybody that has property has those permitted use and has those property rights. So if it's part of those permitted rights, they would, could be.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, so if it's more A-frames and connected by breezeways, then it's still considered part of a single-family residence? Could they expand their house and just put breezeways on it? Okay, maybe, maybe that wasn't properly. Well, go on. Is there any time that, so if.
Trudy, I think, I know what you wanna say. In other words, is there a spot that catches this?
Yes.
The building permit process. I think that's what Brittany wants to reply on.
We don't have anything in our provisions, in our zoning ordinance, that regulates or limits the size of a house. We, we, we don't.
Okay.
Um, so.
Okay, so this house, no matter how I try to prove it, of the seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five square feet and the two wings that are on with A-frames, they are always considered part of the house. They are a one house. They're not two dwellings. They're one house. Okay, thank you. That's all I had on that one. Okay, so, um, the South Dakota Department of Health, and this is, this, the next one on here that she said. Um, I'm sorry, can I go back? They increased the number of music camps from one summer to two, summer and winter. We know now that they want a summer camp of eight weeks instead of three weeks. How long will the winter camp be?
Uh, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. So my understanding is that the summer camp will be six weeks, and then the winter camp would be two weeks. And the original PUD, uh, the planning commission, neither, neither the planning commission nor the board put a specific time length on the music camp, and I can tell you that those conditions were, um, reviewed by both the attorney for the applicants and the attorneys for the neighbors. Um, so those conditions were vetted at that time.
And the attorney for the neighbors had never made any concessions. It was stated that they came to a proper, that they came to agreement on one of the wordings that I'd ask you. And we talked about it, and there were no concessions made on the part of the neighbors. So there was no ru- wording agreed to, there was nothing agreed to. Clarification on that. Um, it says here.
Excuse me, Trudy, and that was at the Board of Commissioners, is what you're saying?
That was, yes, yes.
Not at Planning Commission. I just wanted that specific for the record.
That was Board of Commissioners, yes.
We would not be aware of that.
No, and I can find that for you on the video, but I don't have it with my notes right now.
And what you're saying.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So I am actually aware because I know that Mr. Stiles was sent these conditions, and he did review them. All of the attorneys for all of the parties reviewed all of the conditions. So I'm not exactly for sure what you're talking about because we all looked at them.
Okay.
Thank you for your input, Megan.
Thank you. So you, so you said the summer is only gonna be six weeks? It says here on eight weekend recitals, and those would occur during the summer camp?
Cody, why don't you just stay up there, show the weekend, just for efficiency?
No, you're, no, you're fine.
I don't think, we're, we're not picking on you, but it does help for you to clarify some of these things.
Absolutely. This is my job. So I, I understand.
Thank you.
So the, the applicants were requesting the, the recitals to be all during the, or eight of them, eight of them to be during the, the music camps, um, or the, the weeks of it. Uh, staff felt that, you know, six, six straight weekends of, uh, you know, concert performances was even a little much for, for the neighbors. So our condition, they may have requested that. The condition of approval says that you can, they can only have one performance per month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then the next item that was handwritten on the bottom, it says Airbnb guests from six to twenty. South Dakota Department of Health does not recognize the text Airbnb. It's simply to them, it's simply a website where you can advertise your rental. But there are four things that they can licensure ship first. The first is a bed and breakfast. That's how, five bedrooms or less. The second is a, um, specialty resort. And there's, there's a lot of things in there, and I'm sure, Brittany, you understand that. A specialty resort, it depends on how, what the number you can have, where you live in relationship to the rental that you're advertising. So it can be up to five bedrooms, or it can be six to ten bedrooms. The third place that they can register is a VHR. They can register to have guests when they wanna, so when they wanna take this back from their nonprofit, then they wanna use it as an income property. So the third one is a VHR, va- vacation home rentals. In, so, in, um, Peyton County, a vacation home rental can only be five bedrooms. The last one that they could get a license for is anything over eleven bedrooms. That would be a hotel. And a hotel, and what they have in their structure that they can all have to include is, um, from, they have thirteen bedrooms. So I don't know what the State Department of Health is gonna, gonna, going to license this with this. They have to come out and they have to, um, inspect it. But, um, that application, you have to know what kind of license they're gonna get before you, I would think, before you could, you could rule on a PUD.
So Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, uh, the State, the Health Department does, uh, license bed and breakfast, and you can rent no more than ten units. So they may be able to have thirteen bedrooms, or they may have thirteen bedrooms in their house, but if they only rent ten units, the Department of Health would issue them a health license.
A specialty resort, a bed and breakfast. So we are synonymous with one another. That's why it's confusing. So, yeah, sorry. No, that's why it's confusing. And it's their definition that's confusing. Okay, sorry.
Al- also, if the State Department didn't allow them a, uh, a license, regardless if the RPUD allows it, the state wouldn't allow it. They wouldn't be able to operate.
And after ten bedrooms, it falls into another category. Is that not correct?
She is correct. Once you hit eleven or more bedrooms, you are considered a hotel.
Thank you.
So what's always been the problem here is, um, what you can use your land for. And, um, so what we've been trying to tell you is that, yes, this is zoned egg. There's lots of uses, but number one, you can't have a hotel in a commercial business. Number two, um, I've tried this, I'm gonna say this again. Um, I think this is a vocational school. They are teaching one subject, and that is what a vocational school does. Vocational schools are not allowed in land-zoned egg. Hotels are not allowed in land-zoned egg. Concerts are not allowed in land-zoned egg. And on the other PUD that we received, they had changed the wording from concerts to performances and showcases. Well, a performance can be anything you want, however many number you want. But when they put music in, it becomes a concert. Showcases was a term derived in England in particular, and they call their concerts showcases. Well, when the Beatles came over here, they said, we're gonna give you a bunch of concerts. They didn't know what they were talking about. And they go, well, in America, it's called concert. Concerts are not allowed in a zone property. The wording was changed on our PUD, but if you look at their website, they still call whatever they're doing concerts. So finally, in closing, I have learned some notable facts through all of this, and my husband and I farm and ranch, and there's no one more particular about personal property rights than farmers and ranchers. We're self-employed, we make our own decisions, and, but I can tell you, we are told all the time what we can do with our property. We bought it, we paid for it, and we pay taxes on it. But we are told by the county, by the state, and by the federal government, what we can plant, when we can plant, if we put a tree belt in, they come out and inspect how many feet apart our steel posts are, and how many, how many wires we have, and we're trying to improve our property. And that, and another thing is, I have absolutely no political ambitions, and I'm so thankful that some of you do. I, it's a hard decision, and the first and the last people that were up here were facing the same things that we're facing. The Black Hills has changed, South Dakota has changed, and you have some really, really hard decisions. We're just trying, if we can't protect Klondike Road anymore, I just ask you as leaders to please tell your constituents, look at HOAs, look at covenants, try to protect yourself. I'm gonna add this, and I, and I really didn't know if I wanted to, but building big was given to me by a term of a former commissioner, now state legislature. And he says it's gonna happen. I didn't know what it meant, and I do now, and I saw two performances. And the last, what I'd like to also say is due diligence. My personal opinion in this instance, due diligence is only done by those that follow the rules or have to because their access to funds is limited. When it is your own dime, you do your homework. When Commissioner Ross Connect was running for real action last fall, he was interviewed and asked the question on how the Black Hills was going to deal with the influx of population growth. He stated, and I quote, "As commissioners, we have to make really smart decisions," end quote. So what I ask of you, and I know a lot of, and at least three of you have been down there on Klondike Road, but if you wanna see the, the consequences of what this PUD has already done to Klondike Road, and what additional amendments they're asking for could possibly do to it, please take a drive down it and come to your own conclusion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Trudy, since, uh, they've done their, under the current utilization of the property, what changes have the neighbors, uh, area landowners seen just in that transition?
Just, just all kinds of, just, um, increased traffic on it. Um, they, they went through our land for the easement, and I took pictures. I'm not even gonna show you. I can't, I can't even drive through there without getting very emotional. Um, so just the increase in traffic in there, the whole harmony of the, it's just changed the whole land. Part of that was, it's, it was beautiful. It is now looks like a public highway. One other thing that I wanted to, to say if I could here too, um, when you have a nonprofit, you have to open up your business so the public can see it. So they know that the funds that has been donated to that nonprofit is used the way they thought it was gonna be. So they have to open up that road to the public. This is not a public road. This is a private road. Even though they, uh, widen it, it's still gonna be maintained by the people that live there. So instead of our little road we had, we now have an eighteen-foot road to take care of because of what they did. So increased traffic, um, destruction, um, I mean, the trees that they just bulldozed over. And that went down over the sixty-six-foot easement into our property, and they are cleaning that up. You know, and it's not all cleaned up yet because they're not done.
Is, uh, noise a factor?
I'm sorry?
Noise.
Oh, well, just the traffic, from the traffic. Well, and now, of course, because all of the building of the road, you know, the beep beeps and, and all the construction and all that, which is gonna be less, you know, when, once that is completed. But, but the, I have three granddaughters that are teenagers that drive that road, and they go to school at Stevens every morning. They go, you cannot believe the traffic in and out. Uh, they have to pull over, and that's a forced service, um, because they're at the first entrance, they're at the, they're the Wathen residence.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for Trudy? Thank you, Trudy.
Thank you. And thank you for serving.
Just a clear thing, I think, I have to say one thing, when the nonprofits do have to open their, their, uh, their operations to the public, but I believe that's considered the IRS, uh, review of their, their operations. I'm not sure that the public. Yeah, it, that's what that public means, and in all fairness, because I've worked on a lot of the boards, and I believe certainly anybody has the right to review those, uh, records, as Trudy was saying. Not necessarily their day-to-day operations. I just didn't want that misunderstood on the record. Amy Zog. Thank you, Amy. We get to see you again, and you still have to introduce yourself for the record again. Thank you.
My name is Amy Zog. Um, my family and I have lived out, or own land on Klondike Road for over eleven years now. As we have always said in the beginning, um, the burdens that this business is going to create is going to be an increase in traffic, increased trespassing. And this is a residential area on a private road, and a business just does not fit. Um, we actually aren't certain. not fit. Um, we actually aren't certain how staff feels that at completion, a nine-thousand square foot home, ten practice cabins, and parking lot resemble any of the other residences in our area, in this area. Um, I have driven Highway sixteen, I know you mentioned earlier, I'm repeating, um, almost every day for many years. Um, if thirty to fifty cars are waiting to come to an event, um, a turning lane that would fit five cars would not alleviate the safety of turning onto Klondike Road. Um, it's a blind corner, and most people are going seventy. And I am not willing to risk the safety of my family for the sake of their business. Um, a few of you have been up there? Um, but after turning onto Klondike Road, there's about a quarter mile of Forest Service that is still one lane. One driver has to pull over to let another driver go by, um, creating another burden of congestion. Um, a little further on down the road, uh, we call it the ponds, uh, there's an absolute single lane, um, crossing over those ponds. So any congestion there, um, will either have to pull over or turn around on Gwen and Lindsay Walthen's property. That's the first, um, residential property right there on Klondike Road. Um, so that'll be an added burden on them. Um, of the landowners that live on Klondike Road, all of us have opposed this business from the beginning. And there's even more opposition from people that just own land currently that are planning on building, um, to live out there in the future. Um, we have been to every meeting, we have written letters, and we have talked at length to commissioners. Um, with this much opposition, why are we still fighting this? Um, we just ask that you do not approve this expansion to happen. Um, Klondike Road is not the location for our business.
Questions for Amy? Thank you. Judy Ro- Rhodey? Okay, I, now I see it, Dean Rhodey, thank you.
Judy Rhodey, I have property on Klondike Road. We're back here once again to attempt to keep our quiet residential area from becoming an extended commercial area, just like Mr. Coulson, he wanted his property to stay the way it was intended to. Um, so far, our rights to quiet ownership have been altered, disturbed, and taken away. Now the Rushmore Music Festival wants to double it in many ways, and more than double it, um, in other ways. The traffic will become like a major road going in and out of there. It's possible with their requests that there could be fifty or more cars. So maybe not, maybe not fifty, there might be more, there might be less. Everybody has the right to drive their own car in there if they choose to. Doesn't mean they're gonna have to carpool. Um, and that would be going on for eight weekends, and assuming those recitals could possibly be in the summer months, that's almost the whole summer long. Um, that doesn't take into consideration that a music camp would bring in. In addition, the fundraisers could bring in a hundred cars if everybody chose to drive their own car, and they can, could be less, could be more. Um, and then, uh, with Airbnb, then there are twenty more cars if everybody decides to bring their own. There's also people that bring in food, and there's probably directors that are gonna wanna come in, and there's parents that wanna come look at the concerts. So there's no way to control how much traffic there's gonna be on that little road. Um, if you add that all up, and consider how much that could be, you, would you want any of that activity in your home or by your home? This huge business should have never been allowed. Now we're here trying to keep it from getting completely out of control. It feels like a fungus that's attempting to destroy everything we loved about our properties. Um, is it right to give them everything they want just because they have the money to do so? It appears that they have unlimited amount of funding from supporters for roads, cabins, finishing the cabins, taxes, whatever they need paid for. Um, I don't think that gives them priority over the rest of us that have been there for a long time. Um, money's not a factor in who's right. Uh, big business doesn't always have to win and overtake all others. This time, let's consider the neighbors, the neighborhood as it has always been, and keeping it that way as much as possible. They said about this all wrong right from the beginning with the idea of asking forgiveness afterwards. Nothing about this is right or just. Um, in my twenty-five years of selling real estate, helping people buy and sell property, I quickly learned that the very best solutions were where all parties were treated fairly and did compromise. And we've already had to compromise on what's out there now. Um, you may not get everything you want, but you're able to accept and be comfortable with the outcome. You also wanna know that your voice was heard and opinion was considered to maintain your dignity, dignity. We are asking for is to consider us and leave us with some dignity, knowing that our voice was not totally lost. Um, I consider myself a fair person, and I don't see how any of this ever can be fair by moving in more commercial property. Um, the rest of the neighbors are getting nothing. They're just asking for everything that they want, and how can that be fair? There, um, there was a neighbor that put in two culverts for drainage, and the road was improved because of that. They've now been covered up, and the drainage is going on his property, over his road, and making his road muddy and very difficult, and that hasn't been attended to. Um, and he went to a lot of expense and time to put that in. Um, I, I guess I, I would like to ask is, since there's the precedent of putting a, a commercial property in our residential area now, what stops anybody else from doing the same thing? Can't they just come in and say, you let them have it, we wanna have it too? I mean, we have no protection, just like Bill was saying, there's, we wanna, we don't want this to continue. It's already bad enough. Let's stop it in its tracks. Call it good. Let everybody be somewhat happy.
Questions for Judy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brett and Katie? Please introduce yourself just for the record.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Brett Wolfish.
Good afternoon, my name is Katie Smirnova.
And we're the owners of one-three-two-seven-one Klondike Road. Um, thank you all for being here, it's been a long day already. Thanks for everything that you do for, for all of us. Um, there's a lot to unpack here, and I'll see if I can address as many things that I can, kind of one by one. Um, Commissioner Ross Connect, the road at Route sixteen, which the DOT study's been done on, that's out of our hands, there's nothing. We would love to see that, that land there too. We were the ones that initiated that, that inquiry cuz we would love to see it. It would be nice to have it there. Um, please don't punish us on that one for something that's completely out of our control. Uh, we're now embarking on this road improvement, uh, they always like to refer to it as a private road. It is a road under, it's a public access easement. It has a, it has an easement written on it, it's connected to the deed. We all bought that, and um, the staff recommended that we leave the certain issues of interpretation on that to the courts. Um, but we, we, we thought that for our own personal life first, it was unsafe. I mean, it was twelve feet wide. We were having to negotiate with our neighbors who, as you can tell, don't care for us very much. Um, they would block us, they would block our friends, they would block our family, they would block our guests, they still do. They don't ever move for anybody along that road. It doesn't matter how wide or narrow it is, they were gonna continue blocking it because that's their one way of showing their kindness every day. Um, yet we are improving it, and while I can appreciate that, yes, it's noisy, and it's not great to drive on a road that's currently under construction. They're gonna, they're gonna get a pretty nice looking road when this is all done, and they didn't have to pay a dime to get it. Um, you know, usually road districts are formed, and a lot of people would pull a lot of money to make eighteen-foot roads from twelve-foot wide roads. And at the end of the day, everything will be replanted, as is in the KLJ engineering documents, we're following those as closely as we can with our, with our excavation team. Um, if a culvert was taken out, it's because there's two new ones that are going in. So this is gonna be a very, very, very nice road, um, in the piece that we're allowed to improve, and we are improving. And we're doing everything in our power to make everybody's life a little bit better, and I'm sorry they don't see it now, and they're using that as ammunition against us. But this has been the one thing that's always been the crux to everybody's coming on board, was that road is unsafe, and we learned about this in these hearings, and we agree with you, and, and we've taken on that expense to make our own lives and, and those of our friends, family, and yes, our organization a little bit better. Uh, the property that we own is entirely owned by us. The organi- the organization does not own anything on that property, except for the practice cabins that, you know, we allow them to host there. In the PUD, there's already a, a clause that says that should we ever sell the land or not be the owners of it, uh, us or the organization, should we pass and leave it that way? Um, upon sale, those structures have to be removed. That is a clause that is over and above the existing ordinances that are in place. Um, so I think that's also worth, worth mentioning. Um, in terms of road maintenance, something that our excavators pointed out to us before they ever started work was how little maintained the road was already. Um, they had to take some snow off of it, and they made to, they made sure to take pictures of it, uh, and show how little gravel and maintenance there was before they touched it, because they had a feeling somebody was gonna complain about the quality of the road and blame them for taking off all the gravel, but it's gonna be very well gravelled when we're completed. Um, Katie, you wanna jump in with anything?
I think you've done great.
Thanks. So I'd like to open up to questions, any more clarifications and things that I didn't address.
Before I do, I just wanna clarify one thing. Then in other words, the one lady brought up about the culvert, she'll ask your, your contractor to address that, look into that, make sure that it's, it's draining properly.
All the drains will be complete when we do the five hundred.
When it's completed?
Yes.
Okay. That's, I, I, it kinda flew through there, I heard the two culverts, I wanted to make sure that's what you were referring.
And if you have any questions about the engineering plans, they're all in your packets. Questions for?
You know, it's really not the road that I'm concerned about, it's a, it's a neighborhood that I'm concerned about. I look at a shopping center, and a shopping center really isn't anything until you get an anchor. So you get a Sears, you get a Penny, that's what, you know, them, then they, then they're, they're the dominant. They dominate that shopping center. And I look at that neighborhood before this all happened, it's a quiet little quaint neighborhood. And the music festival, uh, when you moved in there, you, you became the dominant, in my opinion, and you've really changed their way of life. And this is, this is the way I have to look at it, is, you know, I'm, I'm all for the music venue, I don't know if it's in the right location. What you're doing, I totally agree, I think it's great. I just, but I just don't, uh, I feel a little concerned about the neighbors. It just feels like, uh, you know, that, uh, they're not the, I just see some, uh, being dominant, it's just like, they can't control the, the, they're losing control, the way I see, and that's my concern. Just, uh, their property rights.
So we have known, I mean, they, they've been able to enjoy their property for years, and when we're done building and constructing, I mean, you know, our, our six weeks where we have kids there, they're gonna be living in the A-frames, they'll be on our property, they're never gonna be leaving our seventeen acres. Oh my gosh, we have seventeen acres. Lowland earlier today was nineteen, it's two more than we have, and they're asking for a lot more than, than we've requested, and they got a full granting of what they asked for a lot more use than we're requesting. That happened just a couple hours ago in here today. Um, we have seventeen acres, my gosh. I mean, how much more private can you get? And, and they, you know, they have a lot of acreage themselves too. We're not saying that we wanna take our kids and throw them on their properties, we have very strict rules that our guests are ours. They stay on our property, stay on our land, using only a public access road that is an easement road to safely get in and out as, as their way of getting, you know, ingress egress. So we have our students for the festival, and they will never leave. I mean, they're there practicing from eight in the morning until ten at night. They literally play all day long, and if you don't believe that, I urge you to come out and observe for yourself, it's pretty amazing, inspiring. Um, we just got news this morning that one of our students just got into Indiana University as a violin performance major. She spent six summers with us. Um, we have really incredible kids, and they work that hard. And I know it's not normal for kids to work that hard and spend that kind of hours cooped up in, in small cabin-sized spaces or in rehearsals, but our kids do that. For, for the, for the bed and breakfast part, you know, we realize that, yes, we're taking on this road expense, we're making, we're, we're, we're making these improvements. We wanted to have this to begin with, based on, you know, being effectively under a form of duress last summer to get everything complete, just to be able to have our camp. We did make concessions, we did scale things back. This is not us going back on the word. If you look at what we, what we asked for in the very original documentation of this, we're asking for what we always asked for, to not change, to not expand. And once we get this, we're done because we're gonna have everything that we need, both personally, uh, in order to, you know, maintain our property, and for the organization to continue to thrive for years to come. Um, we're changing the fabric of, you know, we, we, we are here in the Black Hills, and we're tucked away behind, behind mountains, and, you know, I wish our neighbors could actually enjoy the wonderful music that gets created, because they, you know, most people would kill to have it that close to them, they could walk to, to, you know, watch our classes. But they've put up, you know, they've been so angry with us, then sort of being neighborly to us, and unless the opportunity to get to know each other, they've created a very hostile environment, so much so that they create road hazards, which is why we felt that we needed to take on this road improvement, even though we had the option not to.
Brett, Katie? I'm the only character who's voted against you twice. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. I think your organization and what it represents, the arts, has done a fantastic job. You've got a history, you've got a, um, a, a full length of successes to fall back on. And I wouldn't be, I'd be remiss if I didn't do this for my banker either. His, one of his, his wife is, is an avid supporter of yours, and I suggested to him he not bring up my name at supper if he wanted to continue to eat. Your arts, to me, are just as important as those B-21s that are coming to this base out here.
Thank you.
That's, that's how important the arts are to children, to young people, to the future, uh, any sort of future, under anything. However, even the B-21s have regulations so that they don't annoy their neighbors. And the commercial aspect of this in a neighborhood is a very difficult thing for folks to understand that are used to living out here. And I did note, and I want you to know that, because I have voted against before, these are basically the same requests that you opened the door with in the first place. So I, I did wanna note that to you. But again, it's very difficult, and I worry, from the very first meeting, the first time I saw you, whether you saw this as beautiful, and it probably was and is in your eyes. But if, if I was to see it and I thought it was beautiful, I might wanna put a salvage card, remember? Because I do classic cards, so that I have support for my parts. That's what I see as beautiful. And those things are difficult to bring together sometime, and especially when we have, uh, organization, let's say, and we'll call it zoning. Some people oppose zoning, some people support it, but it does define what can happen in a particular neighborhood. You guys are involved in, in very deeply in that right now. But I wanted you to know, I, I, I don't think it's a personal thing. I think it's just the difference in, you know, the left hand versus the right hand. We're South Dakotans, and, and that's the way, I came from Chicago, where you didn't necessarily know your neighbor. So that was a far stretch. Any other questions for Katie?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment. I grew up in Columbus, Ohio, in nineteen fifty-six, we moved in, and there was a little airport called Port Columbus. And it was an easy thing to live next to, it was cool. Within the next fifteen years or so, you had trans- only electric fights, you had everything else in there, huge jets, and, and they still, the airport still took it from the position that, yeah, we're just your neighbors. Well, they weren't just our neighbors, they were the big kahunas, like what Ron was talking about. They, what they did defined the neighborhood. And what I look at, when we okayed item, or agenda eleven today, it's on the lower amounts. And now I look at these higher amounts that you're asking, and, and I think they're excessive. I, I think it's the airport now with the big jets. I, I, I'm not comfortable with this. I don't think it's fair on the neighborhood. I really don't. And what, and I'm a musician, I'm a drummer, what you're doing, I think, is great. I just, you gotta balance this thing off. And, and to me, what we're trying, what you're trying to do now is not balanced. So anyhow, that's just my opinion.
Could I make a comment, please?
Sure, go right ahead.
Katie Smirnova, I'm one of the owners. Um, I just, I, I would like to say that I think because we're different, because we're musicians, we're classical musicians, we're often- We're musicians, we're classical musicians. We're often misunderstood in how. We live our life. We live, breathe, sleep, eat music. I mean, literally all of our friends, um, who come over to our home at some point either listen to us play. They listen to our students play. They support our students. They support us. Uh, when we write all of these, you know, events that we would like to have. At our home, we outline anything and everything possible that could involve music that could involve us. But the truth is, everything we do is involves music. It's who we are. It's literally our identity. So when we say. You know, we'd like to have a maximum of two events of a hundred people. We've had these events and they're just, you know, a regular house. Hosting friends. Um, you know, we can say it's for the Rushmore Music Festival or we can say it's Brett and Katie would like to. Play a concert for our friends. We just choose to be very upfront, so everyone knows what to expect. You know. We're just being very honest about what we do, but.
If I may add something, yesterday was the Super Bowl. We could have had a hundred person party at our house. We could have, you know, we have a big flat screen projector screen that we use because that's what we use to watch TV ourselves. We like it more than TVs. And we can put a hundred, you know, that size up on our wall. No problem. We already have that. We do that because we like watching Netflix at night. We could have put the Super Bowl up on screen and invited a hundred people over yesterday. We know enough people to do it. It would not have been a commercial event. It would have been Brett and Katie hosting a party. Which is no different than one of these concerts. And we're asking for it two days a year, not every weekend. You know, two days plus, again, our weekly. Student performances, you know, concert showcases. We're getting to semantics. It doesn't matter because everybody in the room understands what a classical music performance is. But. At the end of the day, we could, you know, have that that Super Bowl party, but have that hundred person Thanksgiving and Christmas. And New Year's Eve. We could, we could already do this as as private landowners and not attach it to an organization in particular. We could already, and as a part of that, we could already take out our instruments and play for our friends because they're at our house. All we're asking for is, you know, the ability to do it in a way that, you know, we could have that fundraiser. And and be upfront about it. Like you said, we 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 are honest, upfront people. That is something that we do. We we try to disclose what we're doing. Because we have, you know, we haven't taken the approach of, you know, building and begging to use the expression earlier. We've gone every step of the way and, you know. Our wonderful planning and zoning staff can attest, we've talked to them every step of the way, from pre-boarding permit through this whole process. Yes, we've made shifts. Yes, we've been fluid with our with our requests and now we're back to what we asked for originally.
Okay, and and I'm gonna, you know, you've really hit the crux of it. You, there are certain uses you can do. As a private basis for your own property. The ones that are causing me the problem, now I'm talked to as a person that votes on your applications, is the commercial aspect. And that seems to be the one that 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 rubs the fur wrong on on the neighbors too. Uh, that's a very difficult thing and and what concerns me is how much of it do you really need? When you say, and and that was an excellent way to put it, Katie, that you are, uh, music cultured adults. I think you're something like that. You would, and I understand that, that actually a light went on a little bit. I never thought about that. I don't do that. I. Work with wrenches and dig holes. So. What I'm trying to say is the commercial aspect is probably the most critical aspect to me when I'm talking about. I guess limiting your rights as well as protecting theirs when I vote. And. How much of this expansion, even though it was originally requested, you didn't get that, you do have an operational basis right now. How much of it was needed? Is the, is there opportunities for you guys to pay the bills, I guess is what I'm asking? If this doesn't go through, I just gotta know.
We're putting everything we have into this.
Okay.
Um, the A frames, you know, because it's our only way of making our student housing free, so every single student that we accept. Comes free of charge. They pay five fifty per three weeks for a meal plan. Cause that's the only hard cost that we can't take on. For them as much as we wish we could. Um, yes, we have, you know, donors and granting funds that help with that, but really. Room and board was our biggest expense as an organization. When we looked at all of our books, we said, we're gonna solve that problem. And being able to rent the Airbnb, short term rental, bed and breakfast, whatever terminology you want that, you know, we have in there. That's our way of doing that. That's our way of making this program free. That's our way of keeping the lights on. That's our way of making sure this. Can function.
Can I?
Go ahead.
So what, I mean, what we do for a living aside from, um, I guess, teaching, um, is. I mean, we travel, you know, we do concerts, um, but when we teach, one of the things that we absolutely have to do sometimes is we teach for free. Um, I'm sure you know the Black Hills Symphony and the winner of the competition will be performing on March fourth. He's our student. He's come to our house how many times for lessons and it's, I mean, they can't afford the additional lessons, but we have to give it to them. Because we want these kids to succeed. That's what we believe that we do for our community. So. Airbnb, you know, vacation home rental, um, short term rental, however you'd like to call it. I mean, that is our way of supplementing what we do for our kids. We just like to have the same. Uh, rules and regulations that apply to all the other, you know, uh, residents in Pennington County apply to us. Um, we hope that we've gone through all the right channels and all the processes to make that possible. Um, but we're really not asking for anything more, anything less. Um, you know, none of the concerts or events or. Um, showcases, performances, we charge for. They're all free. If someone would like to support our students, they can do so. But it's not like we have a concert where, you know, someone has a subscription series and they pay tickets at the door. That's not what we are. That's not what we have. That's not what we ever like to have.
So what I understand is then you folks from your performances, that supports you two, but from this sort of thing. Is needed to pay fixed costs.
So.
Helps assist you pay sis- I guess you do have some involvement there out of your own pocket, but I'm saying it assists you in paying fixed costs. For your, your, uh, like you assume.
Let let me clarify.
Here.
So, uh, the Rushmore Music Festival does not pay us any, we are completely volunteer based. Um, what I meant by going out and traveling for concerts, I sub with South Dakota Symphony. Um, we go to play with. Uh, the college at Sheridan, um, with their symphony or Powder River Symphony. So we travel and we do our own concerts as musicians. Um, but we live here, we teach our kids here, we teach our kids on Zoom, um, and everything that we've built. On our current property is with our own money.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, I can't support this like this. Uh, best I could do is, uh, deny without prejudice and look at something. More, something that I could swallow. I mean, that's where I'm at. Cause I will not approve this the way it's written right now.
Well, and and one of the things, you you two are talking about all the things that. Your camp provides and you're you're you you provide, which I understand, but there's a flip side to this thing. The neighbors. At nine o'clock at night, if they're sitting out on their their deck looking at the stars and they hear music, which I'm a musician or or whatever it is. I'm just saying, what about them?
They would never hear music. All the music happens within our walls.
We invested a lot in insulation.
Hear any at all?
Don't hear anything. Nope. If I could just say one more thing and and we've been, you know, we've been living at this property. Um, at our new home for the last couple of months. I feel like every time our neighbors come up here, we are ostracized. We are viewed as these horrible people that have changed the landscape and. We've been afraid living at our house from from the from the letters that have come into you. Uh, commenting on how we're coming from a different country, a different state. Um, we've been, we've been ostracized. Uh, our students, one of our parents of a nine, nine year old girl, she wrote a letter. To say how many times our neighbors have stopped her on her way to lessons. And she felt that, and the reason why that letter is not submitted to you, it's only submitted to our attorney, is because she's afraid of what would happen to her. Because she's scared. We have PTSD from our neighbors literally pulling us over, blocking the road. They. They pulled our stakes that we we spent twenty thousand dollars on the engineering plans. They pulled stakes. That we've paid for. We've reported that to the sheriff. They've posted on the Forest Service land saying that it's a. No trespassing. We can't get our mail to our house because the mail trucks won't go down that road. I'm sorry, but we have not, we've been trying to make this safer for ourselves, for our students, for our family members. And it has not been easy. But this is the reality. These are the people who will hate us for the rest of our lives. And what we can do is just. Hope that one day they will, I don't know, learn to get along with us and we're we're happy to do that.
Katie, I'll answer that one. I'm the guy again that voted against your apps. I have all the compassion in the world wi- with what you're saying, but I could vote against you and not be unhappy with you at all. In fact, I can. I'd have to be the first to congratulate on your successes. The commercial aspect of anything, everything we go through here when we see a conditional use permit or a P U D or thing. Is the most sensitive issue that involves private property rights. Uh, the vacation rental rentals, which you sat in the audience and heard about, bed and breakfasts, resorts. Very, very touch and go situations as to what people in their own minds accept and don't accept. And some of them could be short term property owners or long term property owners. So do I believe that things could happen? Uh, that wouldn't be anything but unneighborly? Yeah. I do this in South Dakota. The same thing could happen in any state. As I said, I didn't even know my neighbor in Chicago. So, but that doesn't make me a bit. Re- removed from having to make a decision on what you're asking, I guess, as members up here, the. The, uh, five people that are left. It's it's difficult and we have to look at those folks that are unhappy with your operation. Those folks that don't wanna hurt it, but they're unhappy with the way their property is out there versus what what they saw it was. Uh, maybe they've lived there twenty years and they've had it in their mind and they've gone and through that same process for twenty years and you folks are new. And not only that, you're young and you know the young's always a big target. So.
May I ask you a question then?
Sure.
And and it's it's a little pointed, but we have spent countless hours with Cody, with with Brittany. Going through a process. I feel like the process that we've gone to and the staff's approval and 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 the directives that they've given us. Um, all the loopholes that we've had to jump through to, you know, get what we're asking for. I feel like we're being treated differently. I feel like somehow the rules or ordinances don't seem to be applying to us. From from just the way that it's sounding.
See, and I'm exactly the opposite. I feel like we're trying to say yes when the answer is really no. That's why I voted no. In other words, I I think i- in my mind, the initial mistake you you made was thinking was beautiful. In other words, it was beautiful to you folks and it was, and it still is. And the way you're developing it still is, but to someone else, that's not beautiful. So that's, that's where I'd be coming from. I can't speak for the department. I think they go to bat. We have a number of things that come before us that they recommend approval on or denial and we don't necessarily follow. Their instructions. We go through a process, uh, that certainly we attempt to do the appropriate thing with it. And 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 I've been struggling with this one before. And as you can see, I get some outside input in between on these things too. I have a number of people that are involved. Within, I hear a lot of good things out of you. So it's difficult, this commercial aspect and broadening it right now. This early in the the stage of your property ownership. And that's why I wanted to know how critical. The dollars and cents that came in with this would be. I think. Somebody somewhere, I'm gonna go back to the people that talk to me about it and ask them to stand up and help you with what you got. Not not try to expand what you have. Try to help with what you got and make it workable. But, uh, that's what I think. It's the commercial aspect that absolutely. Uh, makes you feel that we're looking at it different and it's not, not, and not in my mind, it's not. Go ahead.
If I can make two follow up questions, I'll try to pose them both if I can remember both of them. Um, one would be. Considering instead of a full on denial, maybe amending this request for amendment to maybe, um. I I think having the bed and breakfast to twenty people would be more important than even the performances. So if you'd be willing to look at that component as a as a revised condition, uh. Then my follow up question would just, I hope not overstepping my my bounds, is. I couldn't help, you know, when when that lowland special resort went through. You know, they, I know they're calling it a special resort. I know we're bed and breakfast. I know they're based on differences, but the characteristics of the property are so similar. And they were met with almost no opposition at all, um.
With weddings.
In terms of what you guys were coming at them with.
Since I drive by every day, I think I could tell you one of the major differences. The road that goes in their place only goes through their place at first and they don't. Affect any of their neighbors. Even though I was concerned about the visibility of that road and I still am and I hope they ha- they work it out right with the road. District, but you, that is a good point. Thank you, Brett.
And if I can bring up this, the first question, thank you. So about just amending some of the conditions, at least for the bed and breakfast of twenty people, which would allow us to continue doing what we're doing.
You would be, uh, interested, we continue things with certainly no additional, what, there's no. Publication needs to go on or anything like that and you can sit down. Right now, it seems that it's not palatable with the. The commission, so it might be wise to sit down and see if you can work out something. And I'll go beat on the people that beat on me and say, why don't you guys stand up and. Dig in your pocket or get something going for those folks. They do a job.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
You know, the way I see it is, most of us, our bu- most valuable asset isn't what's in the bank. It's not our car. It's not our motorcycle, snowmobile, pontoon. It's our real estate. That is our most valuable asset and we've worked on our life to get that. And so the folks that you are neighbors with. They're just fighting for, they don't wanna see their real estate go down in value because they've got their life invested in it. And so you can see where they're coming from. And so somewhere along the line, this didn't get started outright. And all they're doing, in my opinion, is just protecting their real estate interests. Their most valuable asset, I'm guessing. So, I mean, that's kinda where I think people are coming from.
Commissioner, do you think that what we're doing is going to lower their real estate value?
It's a, it's a way of life. And I think their way of life was being able to take a track in there and kinda, you know. That was their way of life and some people like that. Some people don't want an eighteen foot corridor, just inviting more traffic because that's not what they bought into.
I understand, but that's technically illegal. I mean, I understand that was the way of life and there's nothing that the county could do, but. The 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 fact is that we bought property to which there was no safe access to and we had no idea. What the rules and regulations were and we've done everything we possibly, we've invested over eighty thousand dollars into this road. To make it safe, not just for us, but eight other people. I cannot see that. Improving the road or building a beautiful home can decrease the property value. I think if anything, it raises the taxes for everyone who lives there. And I could see that as a problem.
You know, and you're you're right, to some it don't, to some, you know, we're not all equal. You know, some of us like it. Simple and some of it want, you know, some, eh, maybe pave it and curb and gutter and streetlights, flower beds, you know. Everybody's got a little bit different tastes. I think when you moved into this neighborhood, their taste was simple. And I, and and that changed. I think that just, it's hard for people to take.
And I wish we knew that if there was an H O A or covenants, but there weren't, and the way that we were sold that property was that. You know, we could build our dream home and.
But I think what you're hearing the day is that we're willing to compromise. Your neighbors said, you know, they, I don't think they wanted the. Phase one, but they, you know, they admitted it. It's there and they're living with it. And I think what we're saying is that. This might be too much for us, but there might be something, if you, if it was reduced a little bit, that might be workable to us and the. And the neighbors. So I just don't, I just can't, um, adopt this, uh, as it's written right here.
In our plenty of, um, Board of Commission meetings, you've always been very keen on helping us find compromises and aspects. Could you help direct that conversation? Do you have any ideas of places that we could look at reducing?
And I feel like we've already come to, and we've kept some concessions, especially with the number of guests. And that was from the last process. And, you know, the fact that if we ever were to, you know, sell the property, that obviously none of this would carry forward. So there, there. Quite a few concessions that we've already made and we've met with each one of you, um, and the other. So there, there are quite a few concessions that we've already made and we've met with each one of you, um, and the other commissioners. Um, we're just not sure, you know, what else we can do.
Mr. Chair.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item and I'm not sure how long to continue it, but I know we have some commissioners that are going to be leaving and.
That would be my thought.
Because the.
When we get to discussion, I'm going to ask for a second on this and then you can certainly speak. Is there a second to continuing this?
Uh, to continue.
Leave it up to the staff to pick the date.
Yeah. Well, Mike and I were talking, we actually would prefer the deny without prejudice because this thing could take a while. And to continue it, you're going to have to set a time to do it. Now, I think this is gonna, I think this is gonna take some.
We don't have a second and put your motion on the table so the gentleman can speak.
Substitute motion?
Yes.
I'll make a substitute motion.
Another new motion, yes. Cause we didn't have a second.
Okay.
The first one died without a second.
Deny without prejudice. That gives you time to go through this and may, maybe make some changes. But I would highly suggest that you keep the neighbors involved in this dialogue. So when it comes together, that everybody agrees on these, uh.
Okay, I've got to ask for a second.
I would second that.
All right, it's moved in second. Uh, and then we have a gentleman would like to speak from the audience in regard to some discussion. We have another person.
Uh, hi, I'm Doug Zog. Um, I think this has been our seventh or eighth meeting now. Um, people have jobs. I own a business. I have to pay somebody to be at my business when I'm here. Um, you know, this is really getting drug, drug out extremely long. Um, this should have been decided, you know, four meetings ago compared to what we have now. And now we're going to do another continuation. Um, to me, that's just not fair for all of us residents. Um. It, it's just, it's taken so much of our time away from us. I mean, if, if they want to know why we don't enjoy them as neighbors. It's because they've wasted so much of our time. Um, it, it's, it's just not fair. I'm sorry, but it's not fair.
Questions for Doug?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll just, you know, somebody can always make a substitute motion and just go with denial. They want to go that direction.
I was going to comment, Doug, though, this board has acted on it each time it's gone forward to the other one and back. I don't think there's been any continuances and, and due process is part of it sometimes and it's a headache.
It's a long process. It's, it's really very uncomfortable.
If you were the one on the petition end of it, you'd be certainly happy to have due process.
I would have never purchased a piece of property in the middle of everybody else's properties so that we surrounded them. When you go back to the one that you guys did approve on Deerfield, that makes sense because they have access right from the highway. They don't bother any of their other neighbors, but this property is literally in the middle of us. All of our properties surround that property. If they would have bought the first property on the highway, I wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Judy.
First, I forgot. I wanted to thank you, Ron, for making the comment that you've been listening and you hear what we're saying. I, we appreciate that. But we're not here for anything. We are not concerned about how invested they are in music. How much they love music. We're not here debating whether or not we should make compromises. To support their lifestyle. We're here about a big commercial property in our residential areas. Nobody, nobody here has anything that gets music. Nobody ever could. That's, that's, that's something they created on their own. If, if they have this big plan, then they should have known. Where they were getting the fund, funding from. It's not us to compromise to see that they do. And, you know, I, I get that they're invested in music. That's great. But that is not our concern here today.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Motion on the table and we have one member out right now is to deny without prejudice. Any other discussion? From the audience? Yes, Katie.
Katie Smernoah applicant. Um, I would just like to say one more thing and that is, um, Doug was up here saying that. You know, we built our property among all of the neighbors. We have an easement going through our property and we're the second house. That you would really go through. I mean, Doug goes through our property all the time to get to his home. My question is, why have you stopped our nine-year-olds? Why have you almost had our sixteen-year-old kid go off?
Do that, we can't talk to the audience. I'm sorry.
I understand. So my question is, if we have built in their backyard. Why are they going through our property and harassing our students, harassing our, our family members?
I'm going to give you a hard answer. I'm the chair. You're the one that's, that's asking me. I'm, that's my job. I'm the chair. And I don't have an answer for that. So I can understand your concern.
I feel like this, I feel like from listening to every other, um, you know. Vacation home rental or, um, a bed and breakfast. I feel like we're being treated differently. I feel like our neighbors and everyone who's written against us, um, I feel like it's more than just what we do. I feel like, you know, if, if no one knew, if we'd never applied for this and we had a little concert at our house, no one would know about what we do. And I feel like it's about who we are. They have mentioned, um, you know, us coming from a different city or, or country or state. Um, we, I feel like there is a lot more prejudice going on and I will not know really who said what. Um, except for you have those letters in your packets. Um, and I feel like we're being treated differently because of who we are. I feel like we've worked with the staff, um, every step of the way and. I think that's, I mean, the best that anyone can do.
Katie, as a planning member, I can assure you that I review it from what your plan says and your plan does say what you're going to do. A lot of commercial things. So I've looked at it that way. I don't worry about what the other people think.
W- what are the commercial things? May I ask?
Commercial things are the bed and breakfast. The commercial things are the fact that you run an operation where you bring in additional people that aren't. Uh, living on the property.
Is, is a commercial, is bed and breakfast a commercial venture? I thought.
Are you giving all this away for free?
Well, sorry, if I may, Brett Alford, co-applicant. I believe, and Megan, please correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the state of South Dakota's Supreme Court make a ruling that bed and breakfast is in fact residential?
So I feel like this keeps getting brought up and we keep getting pushed back. But all the other properties are getting acceptances for, with a conditional use permit. Why are we any different? There's, there've been numerous precedents and the staff can speak to this as well. So.
Can I actually correct, uh, one of those statements? So that, that Supreme Court case was actually talking about covenants. Um, and it was not talking about bed and breakfast. It was talking about vacation home rentals. So the applicability, it's probably there. I don't know if, how the Supreme Court would end up ruling. My guess is fairly similarly. But I don't think that you can take that case and specifically say that this scenario is exactly the same. Um, it, the law is a lot more nuanced than that. That's my thoughts.
I don't have, go ahead, Mike.
Now, ju- uh, first off, I apologize since you don't play outside. I was in music camp all the way through high school and we always had concerts under the stars. So you don't, so I, I was wrong. When, when we got the packet last Thursday, I saw this and I, I looked at it and I thought about it all weekend. If, if somebody put a soccer camp in where you are. And they did the same sort of thing, a bed and breakfast, and you had people coming and going. Do you think the neighbors would look at a soccer camp differently than music?
I'm not sure.
It's not music. It's not the music. It's the idea that there's something there, whether it's a soccer camp. Airport or whatever it is, it, it's not what they wanted in the first place.
I don't think.
So, so you've got a headwind right off the bat. I, I mean, you just do. But I want you to rest assured, it's not music.
I don't think it's music either, sir. I think it's, I think it's who we are. I think it's.
Nah, it's not.
If I, if I, if I.
It could be other people. Uh, it's still the idea like Charlie said.
I'm going to call this. We're getting off the subject.
Yeah, you just build in there.
I'm sorry, it's a point of order and, and we're going to go on. We're discussing a motion that's on and, and that's what I need to, to address. Uh, the motion is to deny without prejudice and Katie certainly have rights to express your, your desires on that motion. But we're getting off the, the sheet here. Any other discussion from the audience, from the commission? Hearing not all in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carried. Item number sixteen, county board. And we are down to, you guys better all vote to adjourn or we're going to be here for the night. Go ahead.
I'll make it quick. Brittany Muller, our planning director. The board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
Anything, any questions for, written down that one? Items from the public. Our public got mad at us or unhappy with us in the left. Items from the staff.
Um, we just have a couple.
Can I preface the, the meeting a little, uh, we did speak and I wanted to bring up, I would like to. As the chair, use five minutes and one half rebuttal with no more than four combined. Uh, speaking times. In other words, limited to twenty minutes. No one person could combine eight of them and talk for forty minutes. So I'll give them twenty if they can talk for twenty without stopping, but I don't want to give more than twenty.
Did we not agree on three minutes?
Is that acceptable to the commission?
My recollection was that it was three minutes.
Right.
That they could pile their time. If you wanted to set a limitation, how like they could just pile their time.
I'd still say four if we're going to go with three minutes.
Three minutes is good.
I think as soon as we say three minutes, you're going to have people unhappy, but that's all right. Oh yeah, for us. But I'm saying people are looking at, we're pulling the chain. Sorry. All right, then the, then the chair, whose responsibility is to keep track of those things. We'll go with three minutes. Is that what the commission wants? We'll do it. It's done. With only half per rebuttal, that gives them a minute and a half. I got it. Go ahead.
And then I was just going to update that there was a special PC meeting February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three at four P M for the hearing on the vacation home rental. Um, and as the chairman discussed, um, it will just be for testimony only. That's the intent. So. And then the, uh, commission can send the next meeting date at that time.
All I was going to try to open up the meeting was get an understanding so that the crowd understands we're not, we don't need to go through item by item. Come up and give your testimony on what, and if you have a particular item, just rock a, you know, ruffles your feathers and bring it out. But I also wanted to point out that none of us as members have sat and reviewed the thing. That's why we're here. We're starting out right fresh and we'll go from there. So if they want another meeting, they can have it. That fair enough? That's about all I looked at and then let them take speak because we're going. You, we are dealing with an issue that's very, historically over the twenty years, it's been pretty close to fifty-fifty divided what. So it's going to be, it could be a long afternoon.
Yeah, and staff is continuing to get comments. So I got more of them this morning. So I will forward them on, um, since they weren't in the packet. So you have them before tomorrow. And then just one last thing, the building permit report. So, um, we're kind of pretty much on track, same for January. I think the little cold spell slowed down for a little bit, but we've picked up quite a bit since then. So, but that's all the staff.
All right. This is a tough one. Today been a long meeting, been a tough one. Two, we really, and I compliment you guys. You guys hang right in there and those things and it gets tough. They poke the bear. All right, any items from the membership? Hearing done. How about an adjournment?
Something moved.
Second, moved to second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, we are adjourned.